Yeah. I didn't get everything on yet. I think we do have like about an hour. It's just down here.
I didn't know.
And we let her. I just. That's. I believe.
Well, that's actually not quite so. A lot of string there.
Yeah. Well, you too. I mean, it's. There they are. Maybe she knows. She has to. There he is. The boss. He's. Well, I guess. It's. I found it. I don't. I see. They're fully getting on the service. You know, that's always. Yeah. It's. I think. They was. Down. They're. First. My. I'm. Yeah. I can be. I got. Right. Yeah. Oh, no, I think. I mean. I thought. Oh, for real. So. Thank you. I see.
Okay. Okay, I've got seven to five. You got it.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Seven, seven.
I'm. Good. Okay. Okay. Sorry. I forgot.
I've called to order the agenda, the special meeting of the Fountain County Council for May 2nd, 2024. Uh, first thing I would like to do is an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, County Council has one appointment, that is Rodney Norman. He has resigned and Dave Filho. And he has agreed to take that position. Is there a motion to appoint her?
I make the motion.
Second. Dale second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, seven up. Okay, so now I, I'm gonna read a left first. Um, the auditor received an email. And I received a voice message on my phone and said, good afternoon, colleagues. As shared in our call earlier today, I have left the same message with Mr. Crute and Ms. Hardy to aware as well. Matters enumerated below as filed by Dolphin Solar LLC for review and consideration by the County Council are withdrawn by Dolphin Solar LLC. Matters filed with the County Council by Dolphin Solar LLC are inclusive of, one, the submitted economic development agreement received by both Baker Tilly and Barnes and Thorberg on February 9th. And two, the preliminary declaration resolution for the creation of an economic development area, which has been placed for consideration on May 2nd, 2024, special meeting agenda of the County Council. No action beyond acknowledgement of the withdrawal is requested on behalf of Dolphin Solar LLC on May 2nd, 2024. We appreciate the time and attention, which has been invited by the County Council. We did not get any reasoning why he was, they were withdrawing. But I know. According to the ERA application, they were to supply the County Council an SB dash one slash UD statements of benefits. And an SB dash one slash RP statement of benefits, real estate improvements. And two forms SB dash one slash PB, statement of benefits, personal property. We have not seen that, any of those documents. We requested it, the auditors requested it. And after talking with council members, we are going to continue with this meeting and we are going to have a vote on ER resolution. And not accept the withdrawal. Uh, you, you, the public needs to know how we stand on this issue. So with that, we will start our public combat. I'm gonna start with the ones who have asked to be on the agenda. And then after that, anyone who wants to speak, they're always welcome to speak at the County Council meeting. So Sarah, Sarah Densing will start it. You're first on the list. Is Sarah here?
I am, but I'm gonna let our attorney, Mr. Michael Andrew Lee, speak first, if that's okay.
Sure. Thank you, Members of Council, uh, for the record, gentlemen. My name is Mike Andrew Lee. Uh, address 1393 West Oak Street. I'm an attorney in the practice. Uh, address, been here for, for some time. Uh, I represent the friends of Fountain County. Uh, Sarah said that generally she's, uh, always on the agenda. So she would, uh, suggest that instead of her speaking tonight, uh, I address the Council. I mean, more. Oh, sure. I didn't see it. But thank you. Uh. I've submitted, uh, the opposition of our group to any of the tax abatements that are being proposed from the United Solar Fund. In addition, we've suggested that perhaps additional action be taken, uh, to try to slow down the process so that the council, perhaps the plant commission, and hopefully, and eventually, perhaps the commissioners might, and position to gather more data and information. I, uh, for, uh, good or, or worse, I've had, in my practice, the opportunity to represent large groups, uh, in opposition to solar arrays in our county. And doing, and we, uh, kind of a very large one several years ago that we were able to defeat. Uh, and, uh, we've got another one that's, uh, looking for ground, reacquiring ground right now. Uh, they will not be moving forward with that because their county commission has just passed at our suggestion request, a two-year warranty on the, uh, solar arrays. They're going to be doing a master plan, uh, as more data comes in. You have to understand, essentially, these alternative energy sources, wind as well as solar, or especially solar is in its infancy. And what we've learned over the last several years is that as more data is being collected, more information is being generated as to whether, uh, the, the, the cost benefit ratio of having the, uh, taking out a productive farm ground or moving potential areas is, uh, is worth the benefits that, that they tout in terms of getting these things approved at the county level. Uh, and so what we're suggesting, what we're requesting is that the council, uh, having the authority over the per sprints of the county and, uh, making sure that the, uh, that the county taxpayers are protected. But that is, that is your goal, and your goal is solid in terms of the authority that you're given as elected officials to make sure that, uh, you're good stewards with the local finances in the county, as well as making sure that the county taxpayers are protected. We don't think, uh, these, uh, tax abatement requests and other subsidy requests at the local level make any sense whatsoever in the statute. And do not pass a small, less, little cost benefit issue. You have to make those kind of decisions all of them, uh, as you know, with the, uh, the county council. So, uh, we think, uh, with more information and more data that we could submit to the council, those commissioners and, and the plant commission, uh, we can potentially aid them in making the correct decision as this matter goes along. Uh, as I said, uh, just in the two years since we were able to defeat the very large solar array over our county, uh, we've learned so much more, uh, from the studies that are being conducted all around the country by professors and those of the academies, uh, regarding the, uh, detriment on, on the panels, what it might do to the environment, the, uh, issues that have arisen with regard to elimination of productive farm ground. Now, in our county, uh, the farming community, uh, in large measure, especially far along, those, those entities, uh, weigh in with regard to those types of issues. Uh, you know, the, I understand all the issues, uh, as they, as they emanate out of Washington, and we can all be or disagree with regard to, uh, energy independence and, and, uh, alternative energies and those, those types of things. But the concern that our group has is that these industries are heavily subsidized by the federal government, by the grants and, and others, other federal subsidies, that they see no reason from the council standpoint why they ought to be further subsidized by the taxpayers or farm.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
So, uh, you know, without saying anymore, you have my submissions in writing. I'd be happy to answer any questions or comment further if you choose. But I wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. Uh, we're in it for a long haul and, and, you know, like most lawyers, I'm a hired gun to come in and do what's, what's asked of me, to the extent I'm taking the case. But I've also, with the data that I've learned and gained over the past couple of years, really committed to this, uh, issue of the inefficiencies of solar arrays, and in particular in our county and perhaps in yours, you might, uh, you might believe, the elimination of productive farm ground. Uh, the, the land will never be the same if it's removed on productive farm land for 20 years. It's never gonna be in a position where it's gonna be put back. And if you think about it, think about the, the logic, if we have to have these solar arrays that are gonna take productive farm away from the agricultural use, and we're gonna take it like for 40 years, why in 40 years are we gonna, kind of, start it? Aren't we gonna still need it at that point? So, uh, there's only so many emotions that they could do again. And, uh, and when we start, uh, evilizing productive farm development, some of the best information that you're considering that we stop using it, uh, and taking out of production, uh, who's gonna be the one? And that legitimately is a concern in, I know our residents, Boom County had, and Fawn County, to the folks here in Fountain County, they legitimate, legitimately have a concern about that as well. And we look forward to including the provide data and come to your meetings and answer any questions. Uh, because I know I owe the job quite substantially, there's a couple of studies and some other information in my letters. Uh, but believe me, I have hundreds and hundreds of papers and studies, the discussions that we have with the professionals all around the country, with regard to the, you know, solar arrays and, and the inefficiencies and the, right, the benefits. Yes.
If we're speaking with Dolphin, um, this, this is in the son of mine, they're, they're so far along with their work on that project. Except the, no ERA, but we, we owe them.
Yes.
And they're so far along, are they still obligated to their leases that they have signed, and go ahead and build?
Well, I, and that's, that's a, that's a very tough question, and I don't know that they answer that.
We've been hold, they've taken, who've been hold is coming.
Uh, I'll give you a, uh, I'll give you a little history of what takes them ahead and wrong with the wind farm. Uh, and, uh, the science, I put in county to represent the board that took down the wind farm and the lawyer at that time was, uh, clearly his BRC department, uh, planning and zoning.
They, they want to screw that.
Oh, fairly, uh, fairly young and, and didn't know a lot about planning and zoning law, so they hired me to, uh, and it took, uh, over a year and a half to attack it north from, what do you say? And ultimately, what happened was the subsidies went away in, uh, in Germany, it was a German company that was sponsoring it. Subsidies went away, so, and the attorney's duty, they just started pulling out of that. So when it comes to subsidies, whether they're federal, state, or local subsidies, by way of tax abatements, it's hard for me standing here to know at what level, uh, removing the subsidy will cause them to leave. It, it's, it's a, it's an academic question, it's a good question, probably they're the only ones in their mind that can answer that, and they probably won't. So, uh, all you can do, I think, as a council, is to act, do what you think is best, make the decisions that you can on behalf of the citizens, and hope that other elected officials will follow suit. And, and, and do the, do the right thing and do the same thing. Uh, plant commission, uh, apparently showed, uh, some, some backbone and indicated they may vote on the moratorium, recommending it. Uh, they're only a recommending body, the commissioners are the ones that are gonna have to make that decision. But I think if the not elected officials start sending the right message that, look, we're just not gonna open our arms to this, but we're gonna study it, we're gonna, you know, have a empirical information that will allow us to make legitimate decisions, good informed decisions, and we're just not gonna rubber stamp these things. I, I think that sends a loud message to these companies. Uh, I'm not prepared to say what that's gonna mean in terms of projects that are currently underway or currently planned, uh, because, uh, in some ways, the horse is already out of the barn in that regard. Uh, but it's, it's, it's never too late to try to do the right thing and try to backtrack and see if you can, uh, if you can, uh, I think, secure your agricultural future and your, your landscape here in the county. Yeah, it's a position we took in Boom, it's a position of current technical, another project in Boom. And quite frankly, in terms of moratoriums and those types of things, except our kind of commissioners and latterly with the research that we've done, there's probably eight or nine counties that have developed a moratorium over the years and have been challenged for so. Uh, and in one county, it's banned, uh, solar, and not been challenged at this point. Never know what's, what the prediction is. It would've been interesting to know why they withdrew their, uh, their request, that particular request. Uh, but, uh, it, it, you know, maybe they didn't fall off the pump in traffic, maybe they read the handwriting on the wall, County Council just not go their own stamp, they're gonna investigate things, study them, and make the best decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Very awesome pleasure.
Sarah, you were on the list, and so was the legal representation, so do you wanna speak?
I said, well.
Okay. And, uh, next we have on the list is, well, after I go through the names who have requested to speak, if anyone else wants to speak, you're certainly permitted. But all I ask you is please tell us your name so we can have it for the record, uh, when you do, and come to the podium. So, uh, next up, we have Clint Kilby. Who, who are you calling? Are you? No. Clint Kilby.
I haven't seen him. He's in the corner.
Oh, Sam Corwell, well, then we'll give him time to come down. I, I, is there a group called Concerned Citizens? Is that all they turn in their name?
Yeah.
Right, okay, well, let's do the individual names. Uh, Carol Owens.
I'm Carol Owens. Just state your name.
Well, no, I said the ones that aren't on my list.
I, I want to, uh, withhold my comments and clarify what I heard, what you've all decided on.
Okay. And I know you've come up to talk to me after, and that's Carol, so doesn't surprise me. Uh, Dave Maltzberger.
I'm all at my wife being the key river records. For the record, my name is Dave Maltzberger. I live at 2009 South 100 West Mill Creek Township, Fountain County, Indiana. Been married 17 years to my wife, we have two wonderful children. I'm a lifelong resident of Fountain County. My parents were lifelong residents of Fountain County. My grandparents were lifelong residents of Fountain County, and my great-grandparents were lifelong residents of Fountain County. I wanna welcome the opportunity to come and speak before you, and I'm so glad that you put me on your agenda. Um, I'm not a lawyer, okay? That's, that's come down around social media, I'm not a lawyer and I don't play one on TV. I'm a registered respiratory therapist, but I did go to college and I can read. And because of those things that I'm concerned, I wanted to dig a whole lot deeper when I saw that memorandum come across, that declaration. And this has all been built around that declaration, so we're going to just go as if their request had never went, so that we can get a fuller picture. Before I start, I think we need to have a civics class, 'cause I feel like our citizens, we're all educated, but trying to understand, what do you all do? In a nutshell.
In a nutshell, the council is the fiscal body for the county. We set salaries, we, we set a budget for all the office holders, sheriff's department, ambulance. Commissioners are the ones who spend some money, they approve any bills from the, uh, all the offices, they sign all contracts. And, um, basically, that's, they, they make all the appointments to, um, ambulance director, highway director, like.
What you said, salary.
Pardon me?
Salary.
We set the salaries, yes. Who does the tax rate? Uh, the County Council sets the tax rate, and why are you bringing that up? I just wanna bring your point, and I have what was advertised in paper, 22 payable on 23 and 23 payable on 24, if anybody liked a copy of it. But when you look at your tax rate, and I, I heard last week a lot of people talking about how high their taxes went, the only tax rate this body approves is your county's tax rate. And if you look at that tax statement, two years ago, it was 57 cents per $100. Last year is 49 cents per $100. This year, it's 46 cents per $100. You look at Southeast Fountain School, it was 73 cents per $100. Last year, it's 98 cents this year. And I'm not trying to put anybody under the bus, but we don't set schools, townships, and, and Attica schools were 96 cents last year, or 95 cents last year, 96 cents this year, and I expect there's gonna go way up again next year.
Do you know, do you know offhand how close we are to the max caps for tax? Can any of you share with what, how close our county is to the max caps? And maybe the public doesn't know that there is a max cap. How, how much that we can do there, it is a limit, but there's a, there's a stop in there, there's a stop.
And maybe if someone's here from the assessor's office, they might be able to answer that, 'cause the assessors, they're the one that, I believe, gets the assessed values, turns it into DLGF, DLGF sets, even though we recommend what our tax rate's gonna be, they have final say, they set the tax rate. Fred?
My, my tax, um, levy can go up four and a half percent. Yeah, here, approximately four to five.
So how close, how close are we? In your, in your area, how close are we to hitting that tax?
Is.
Yeah.
So. Well, we usually will more than a year. Or we're just, we're not, but it's, the legislature, the full limits, like four, four and a half.
So we're right there, right at that, that cut. I want to get an understanding, everybody can understand, you all had, you all set the budgets, had to do with the county tax rate. But that's, that's about it. That's about it. And I wanted to cover the max caps, because I think it's important for, we need to, I think as citizens, we need to know what those max caps are and how, what you're dealing with.
It's a, it's just a max on what you can raise it every year, based on your, it's no set number, I mean, it's not a certain number.
It's based on.
What was that?
It's been based on the AB.
Okay.
And I hope you work within $732 of being at the max on our, our county's actually. She, calling to pull the budget order to one, that's right.
Well, you could, just, just as a general tree, as we go through this, this isn't gonna, this isn't gonna be quick, it goes into lots of details. And so the declaration that was before the council, it was prepared by Dolphin?
I'm sorry, Dave, what?
The, the declaration that was before the council, is before the council, was the author of it Dolphin. Did Dolphin author that declaration? Write that up.
I'll refer to our attorney, 'cause I, it came from him, and I, I'm not sure who. Yes, yeah, you're, this.
Okay. Okay, so, so it was, so it was done by Dolphin. And as we've already discussed, they did their statement of benefits and put that in there, but never shared that with anybody on the council. So we're kinda clear here. So I got a question for our attorney, 'cause I'm not an attorney. Is, is that declaration a legal document? What's that mean? Is it something, is it something legally binding under the state, under the laws of the state of, of Indiana? And if something was done wrong in it, someone could get sued on grounds of it.
The declaration as it sits right now.
As it sits right now, sitting there, is it a legal document? You don't think if somebody signed it and there was something false in it, if someone signed it? Yes, if someone, but if someone signed it, so, so like, in all fairness to our council members out here, um, I've also, I often heard that's called legal jeopardy. I had a couple, I had an attorney one time tell me, tell me what my legal jeopardy was if I pursued a document. So, so if something was false in that document and they signed it, then there could be legal jeopardy.
It depends.
Depends what it's, I mean, if it's. Right. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna play the player game with, yeah, depends what it is, right? If it's.
If it's something that says they submitted something and they didn't, like Dudley said, he requested that, those documents, so he, he wouldn't, we, I assume the council would've stopped it before. You know, if they signed something that says they received something they didn't, then, correct, potentially.
Okay. So I wanna go to page three of the declarations, y'all have a declaration that, I didn't make a copy of that. I assumed you would've had one, so we're gonna review it tonight. I wanna go to page three. And on page three, about halfway down, it says, now therefore, based on the foregoing, the council further resolves finds and determines, section one, that all the conditions for the designation of the economic revitalization area have been met, and the foregoing findings are true. And all the information required to be submitted hasn't been submitted to proper form. That statement in it, the foregoing findings are true. And while there are many, and I wanna say many things in this declaration that merits review and detailed discussions, I am solely going to focus my time on page three, section eight. And if you wanna hand out number one to everybody, I think they made a copy enough of the term in the, the council in this. Section eight on page three reads, that the real property, one, is within the county, and two, has become undesirable for, or impossible of, normal development and occupancy because of the lack of development, secession of growth, deterioration of improvements or character of occupancy, age, obsolescence, standard buildings or equipment or other factors which have impaired values and prevented normal development of property and use of property, and therefore constitutes an economic revitalization area as defined by Indiana Code 6 dash 1 dot 1 dash 12 dot 1 dash 1. Well, adopted. I gotta go for an air with this as I was reading, I really did. So the, the literary decoration that was created for an economic revitalization area, the County Council of Fountain County States, 'cause they presented you, they put you guys in the hot seat, they wrote it, but they gave it to you and put you in the hot seat, because it kept saying County Council of Fountain County.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but like, if you wanna make clear that just because, put it on an agenda to vote on, doesn't mean the County Council.
No. Oh, no, 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 that, no, that, that's why I wanted to read this as it was, as it was.
I got a little bit. Okay, sorry, go on, I apologize.
That the real property, one, is in the county, is to become undesirable and impossible, and we just read that section. I wanna look more closely, and what I'm reading here verbatim is the report that multiple sentences asked me to come and give to you all. Okay, they said, this is really good, and you need to come give a report to the council on this. So I'm gonna read a lot of this verbatim, just for the record, of this article. This article looks more closely into what Code 6 dash 1 dot 1 dash 12 dot 1 states, and its respect to agriculture land, and the scope of whether Fountain County Farm Brown classified and coded agriculture is undesirable, has impaired value, declining in productivity and prevented from normal agriculture development use. First, does Indiana Code 6 dash 1 dot 1 dash 12. First, does Indiana code six dash one dot one dash twelve dot one specifically state about agriculture land? Dolphin in this thing, they 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 put section A and page four, but. What they didn't tell you all was they didn't give all of the code. They left part of it out. Because the whole code, they just stop at this. They go an area, they 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 stop before they get to section C. Of the code. Because you go on down under A and B. And you get a C and. They're not, they they let that part out. Because section C, if we read it in its entirety, that whole section one, for the purpose of this chapter. An economic revitalization area means an area which is within the corporate limits of a city, town or county. Which has become undesirable for or impossible of normal development occupancy because of lack of development, succession of growth, deteriorations of improvement. Or character of occupancy, age, obsolescence, standard buildings and other factors which have impaired values or prevented normal development. Of property or use of property. The term economic revitalization area. Also includes, if you pull the code. A, B and C. A, any area where a facility or a group of facilities. That are technologically, economically or energy obsolete. Are located and where the obsolescence may lead to a decline in employment and tax revenues. B. A residentially distressed, and I wanna ask our attorney one thing, when they put a semicolon there, what does that mean? I mean, is there some legal jargon as to, you know, you hear about people getting sued over periods and commas and semicolons? What does it generally mean a semicolon?
Generally means the list is on, is going.
Okay, the 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 list goes on. B, a residentially distressed area except as otherwise provided in this chapter, semicolons. And. In the legal world, is there a difference between and and or? If you had somebody there again, during the court, was there, could they get potentially lose their pants over and and or?
Yes, but the list you're going through is not all of them, right? These aren't all.
I'm just trying to get, I'm trying to get the legal, I'm trying to make sure we get the most money out of him tonight. Wanna get the most money out of him tonight. We're gonna do it here. When he goes on, it says and, the code does not say or. Okay, it isn't an or, it's an and, and this is the heart of this. C, an area classified as agricultural land for property tax purposes that. As a condition of being designated an economic revitalization area will be predominantly used for agriculture purposes. For the period specified by the designating body. So I wanna back it. So we've got a list. We have, and the list goes on, that's what the semicolon means, that the code doesn't say or, it says and. There are three sections, A, B and C, and the last one says an area of land classified as agricultural land. Do we have anybody from the assessor's office here tonight? Even up in the courtroom, if we do, if you're in there and you're, you're from the assessor's office, come down here because we wanna make use of you too. Because that classified as agricultural land is interesting. And I think too oftentimes in this county, we are hung up on zoning, 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 zoning. But the real thing behind it is the classify, because we can't pay our bills if we can't assess a value of something. We have to assess it, say what it's worth, and then tax a tax to it, so then we can collect the revenue and we can pay our bills. It's kinda how it works as I see it, and if somebody sees the difference, speak up. So back to our civics class, we all want our bills paid, right? And we don't have enough money right now, right? We've got a failing building and. Higher workers and employees just need a general better wage to keep up with the inflation, so. I got the next question for you guys, because I assume since you sit here, everybody's at the snuff on the, on the zones. How many use zones designations does Fountain County have? Can anybody speak up? Does anybody know how many use designations we've had? We have five, and you will find them in the latest edition of the Fountain County zones. They did August twenty-seventh to twenty-one. It's article two point two. We have agriculture, business, industrial, landfill and residential. Since we're talking about agriculture, let's just see what that agriculture district is supposed to cover. And I got another question for you, since you're the one. So kinda how it works out here and county level is, we operate by kinda like what's called home rule, right? So unless the Indiana General Assembly passed something and said this is the way it's gonna be. It's left for us down here to figure it out, right?
Sure.
Yeah, so let's go, let's go back. We're gonna do lots of flip flopping, so we're gonna go back. Let's go to the agriculture district. The district is designated for agriculture, A is intended for areas that cannot physically be served by public water or sewer facilities. This district will preserve and protect agriculture land from undesirable urban growth. While permitting limited residential development on large sized lots and provide adequate space for private water and sewage facilities. Alright, so let's go back. And let's look. At them sections over here under that economic revitalization area. It says that these areas and these townships are undesirable. Don't have normal development and occupancy. Substandard buildings. But. It's not our fault. We said we didn't want urban sprawl in those. We didn't wanna take water out there. We didn't wanna take sewage out there. That's interesting. Does anybody have their copy? I figured y'all come with a copy of your zone and, because I should do. I like to have one, because I don't know what the hell said. Let's go to that use table. Agriculture, district of permitted use. My gosh, it is a bucket list. It does not say corn and beans on there anywhere. It says accessory use. Does anybody know what accessory use is?
I don't.
We can have agriculture, agriculture buildings, we can have airports, we can have Ben Brent, a cemetery, churches, we can marry and marry there. We've got greenhouses, golf courses, home balcony, daycare, machine and welding shops, private airstrips, and this airport's twice, that's interesting. Private clubs and camps. Stables. Oh, there it is, down there, twenty-eight, commercial solar energy systems. There it is. That's where they're coming in at, using that little loophole there. So what does the state of Indiana say agriculture use is? Since we get to decide out here if it's not decided by the General Assembly. What does the state of Indiana say agriculture uses? By the way, there's a code for that. It is six dash one dot one dash four dash thirteen, and this is the twenty twenty-three version. If you would hand out number two to our councils, so that they can have a copy to read along. All the way till Banda gets it handed out. Because I think this is important, because it talks about our assessors and our tax folks. It gives us really clear guidance. Section thirteen A, in assessing and or reassessing land, the land shall be assessed as agriculture land only. When it isn't devoted to agriculture use. B, for purposes of this section and in addition to any other land considered devoted to agriculture use. Any colon, one, land enrolled in colon. A, land conservation or reserve programs administered by the United States Department of Agriculture. Land conservation programs administered by the United States Department of Agriculture Farm Services. Agency semicolon or. A conservation reserve program or agriculture easement program administered by the United States Department of Agriculture Natural Resource Conservation Service. Two, land enrolled in the Department of Natural Resources Classified Forests and Wild Lands Program. Or any similar or successor programs. Three, land classified in the category of other agriculture uses. As provided in the Department of Local Governance, Government Finances Real Property Assessment Guide. Remember that phrase, local government finances, real property assessment guidelines. Or four, land devoted to the harvesting of hardwood timber is considered to be devoted agriculture use. Agriculture use for the purpose of this section includes, but is not limited to. The use is included in the designation of agriculture use in I C thirty-six dash seven dash four dash six. One, six, B, such as the production of agriculture or livestock products, commercial aquaculture, equine or equine products. Land designated as a conservation reserve plan, pastureland, poultry or poultry products, horticulture, nursery stock, fruits, vegetables, oranges, grains. Timber, trees, bees, apiary products, tobacco or other agriculture crops. General farming operational purposes, native timberlands or land that lays fallow. Agriculture use may not be determined by its size of a parcel or size of a part of a parcel. This subsection does not affect the assessment of any real property assessed under I C six dash one dot one dash six. Assessment of certain forest lands or I C six dash one dot six dash one dot two. Assessment of certain windbreaks or I C six dash one dot one dash six point six, assessment of filter strips. The Department of Local Government Finance shall give written notice to each county assessor of. The availability of the United States Department Agricultural Soil Survey data. Remember that, we'll come back to that one. And the appropriate soil productivity factor, remember that one too. For each type of classification of soil shown in the United States Department of Agriculture Soil Survey map. All assessing officials and property tax assessment boards of appeal shall use the data in determining the true tax value. Of agricultural land. There it is. That is how we predominantly pay our bills in downtown. However, notwithstanding the availability of new soil productivity factors and the Department of Local Government Finance's notice. Of the appropriate soil productivity factor for each type and classification of soil shown on the United States Department of Agriculture Soil Survey map. For the March first, twenty twelve assessment date, the soil productivity factors used for March one of twenty eleven. Assessment date shall be used for January one, twenty sixteen assessment date and each assessment date thereafter. And remember all these dates, not in general, but remember kinda how the government does this, because it's gonna be really important later.
Little force out of there.
The Department of Local Government Finance by rule provided for the method for determining the two tax values of each partial agricultural land. This section does not apply to land purchased for industrial or commercial purpose. Remember section E. And then it gives a whole bunch of yada, yada, yada codes and everything when they update all that. So our current zoning districts have many permitted land uses. Can, can anybody here, we wish we had that version from the assessor's office, but they give us a little guidance on how that coding system of property tax classification is used. And my dear, if you could hand out number three and number four to our council. Well, I kinda give a general there. I'm even surprised one of my neighbors put it off this, but I go. Do you know how many classifications are on your farm? I'm glad I only got forty acres and thirty-seven and a half or tell them, guess what, there's code for that too. The section does not even tell. So while I'm giving the council, y'all can look this up, okay? My neighbor was so gracious to to fill me in on this. You can go to Deacon dot com and you can look up your property and you can see how many codes there are on your parcel. Big or small, you will see them. So, we're gonna look at my little farm here. We're gonna look at the bottom where it says land. Land type is tillable crop land. They got a. An M A O A and that's predominant, and the rate for that is two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. But it's adjusted to two thousand eight hundred and four. The estimated value of that whole bit of parcel is seventy-eight thousand. Goes down through a non-tillable road right away, farm ponds, tillable crop lands, so that's some more road right. Yeah, see, I'm like, I got roads on threes, on three sides. Oh, look, we got some like. Can you, can you tell us what your first start with on a parcel of land? What's the first thing you gotta tell it? You gotta tell it what? How to choose, yes, that use because, hey, if you go back, did you go to the zoning thing and look at them twenty-eight sections in there for pro, for farmland? Yeah, you, you go up there first. Okay, yeah, it doesn't classify the zoning, does it? No, no, no. So how we pay our bills has nothing to do with zoning.
Alright, how are you?
Has to do how we can value it, right? You might as well come have a seat, because I'm gonna use you a lot. I really am. I'm gonna use you a lot. Probably, probably, you start with something like this, this other page, looks more for you. Remember when I said, remember that real property assessment guidelines, it's online, it's about to say. Well, it's why I'm certain that our assessor people do not have every page memorized, okay? But I'm gonna give the ones that are just important for tonight, and that's why I have given to our council. You see, up here, the very first thing is a one. And it says agriculture taxable land and improvement is primarily agriculture purposes. And then there were two, three and a four and a five, like two is a legal descriptions being valued by several. Clap value of sixty dollars per acre. Goes down to a number four is a commercial taxable land and improvements used for general, commercial and recreational purposes. Guess that's if you're gonna have a camp on their farm, I guess they could use that one. Six is exempt. I don't know what exempt would be. And eight, eight is taxable land and improvements owned by a public utility company. Do we have a public utility company in our county? Can anybody tell me that? Anybody on the council, do we have a public utility? Yes, well, y'all gave it a vagueness one, we got a public utility. The one that's already been granted, it's public utility. But we'll get to that later. I learned a lot in this. I learned a lot, more than I want to ever know. But it, but, but if you have, you have this on the screen, y'all could see that basically agriculture land is a one hundred class. A one hundred class. Then all them others, they start with, it's number two, it's a two hundred class, three is a three hundred class, four is four hundred class, so on and so forth. Alright, pop quiz again. Can anybody tell me? How many of our zoning districts, we can have a commercial solar energy system and they abbreviated that, and that is called a C S E S? I love them, they're dense. How many, how, is it permitted? How many, how many of us can we use it in? It's three, agriculture. Business and industrial zoning district. Now, now I got, I got, I got this funny question with y'all. Remember when I said there were five and the other two were residential? We all don't wanna have a solar field around our yards, right? Well, I do it in the back, I look at it. And we have a landfill. Now, if there was any place in this county that we should develop into a solar field, it should be our landfill. I, I really gotta say that. Yeah, I mean, really. But we should just, we should level it out, because if there was ever a good public, private partnership. And if I was a dealmaker and not Donald Trump. I'd make that deal up, put that solar field on that county land we got there, and then we can. And then we can use that solar first. To feed our jail and to feed our med shed and to feed Fountain Central. And then that, then that meter, the rest of the back end of the grid. We get to harvest and lower some bills. Now, that'd be a good deal. And plus, we'd show that, hey, we like solar. We put it on the belt. I like that.
I like it. If I get that though, based, the state won't let us do the same thing with that land for thirty years from the day the commissioner signed it, both in nineteen ninety-eight. The twenty twenty-eights, the first day, and that's totally a I D M. Says it's okay, but.
Well, hey, we should start, we should start planning because zoning, zoning started being landed in this county in twenty seventeen. I mean, I mean, that's, that'd be about seven years. We'd be riding on par. We'd be riding on par for that. But I want to, is anybody up on their Article nine? Because I love Article nine. I love it. This is why, God bless Jim McKeever, he said, we need to redo our comprehensive plan and redress this thing because I was like, yeah. You were spot on because I want to read part of, part of nine point oh one. The solar energy systems and facilities in our current August twenty-seven, twenty-one edition of Fountain County zoning. Purpose, the purpose of this article is to plan for and to regulate the use, improvement and maintenance. Of real property and the location condition and maintenance of structures and other improvements as authorized by Indiana Code thirty-six dash seven dash two dash two. The regulation of the solar energy systems, solar farms and facilities and other solar energy devices. Is designated to protect the public health, welfare, and safety. The people that wrote ours are doing it to protect us. I think we need to work on some rewording of that. My dear, if you would hand out packet number five. Now, if I gotta go through it step by step, those that remain will get to understand the full impact of this, and I think it will surprise everyone where this leads. So now then, do you remember that book that I gave you that was all those codes? That said they were one hundred codes, two hundred codes, and so on. At the end, there was an eight hundred code for that public utility? Well. That's called solar land base. And what I just handed out to these folks, this is from the. From the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance, and these folks are a godsend to help. Help stupid people figure out what to do. They actually give it to our government officials to make it so that it's easier for them to understand. And so. One of the things that caught my attention was there was one in twenty twenty by Barry Woods, Assistant Division Director, and he put out a memo called Solar Project Assistance. The Department of Local Government Finance Department has received inquiries regarding solar farm projects. And solar farms and/or panels that can be assessed as real personal state distributed property. And the whole mumbo jumbo, but then we get down to, the bottom of that page is interesting. Us. They address that agriculture part. With regard to the pricing of solar farms and land, assessing locals of its responsibility and assessing the land that it gives code and other code and addressing, assessing, adopting the lands. The land shall be assessed as agriculture only when it's devoted to agriculture use. They recognize there was a problem. And code six dash one dot one dash four dash thirteen defines devoted to agriculture use. Within this statute, and guess what? It goes back to that whole thing we just already discussed, what says in there says is ag land. But the next paragraph. That he put into there was interesting because he said in here, the land underneath solar farms would not meet agricultural land use and thus. It would be assessed as something other than agriculture. Commercial or industrial. If you would hand out packet things. So obviously, even amongst the state, there was. There was a lot of discrepancy. What are we gonna do and how are we gonna value these puppies? Because they could be worth a lot of money and we could be leaving a lot of money on the table if we didn't do something about it. So the people up there in our state house, they all got together and. And on April twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-one, Governor Eric Holcomb signed into law. House Enrolled Act thirteen forty-eight, twenty twenty-one, and it became effective law of the land. In January one, twenty twenty-two. Thirteen forty-eight. Is how property owner used by those public utility companies shall be taxed. The power company by thirteen forty-eight now includes. They call them, we're gonna have to upgrade our zoning. We can't call them C S E S no more. We now have to call them a utility grade solar energy installation facilities. And under Indiana Code, if we look at this. It divides it into three distinct districts. Because they said there was a whole lot, and probably some of these solar. Facilities and facilities, they were probably complaining about what they were gonna get charged for these. So the state said, fine, we'll come in and we'll simplify this. So they put out another memo to explain this. It says, section one of the A T A thirteen forty-eight states that the term light heater power company now includes a utility grade. Solar energy installation facility, the term solar land base, which means solar land base determined under the code of six dash one dot one dash eight dash twenty-four. The term utility grade energy solar installation facility means renewable. Grade solar energy facility that is used for the purpose of generating. Solar electricity for resale to consumers. It says nothing there about protecting our health, safety, and welfare. We're gonna have to seriously update that zone. Because the state says that that's not its purpose. And it says, effective above this passage, it amends another code by providing new guidelines for assessment of land underneath the fixed property of a utility grade solar installation facility. The solar land base rate. For each region will serve as an assessment cap unless the facility was in existence and assessed. On January one, twenty twenty-one. So do we have any of these commercial grade utility things in our county yet? No. None of them were in existence yet. So. What did they classify as? They gave it an eight hundred class. I want to go back to that big code sheet. I want y'all to get out your code sheets. That big one, chapter two, it's that real property assessment guidelines. Guess what? That is number eight. Taxable land and improvements owned by a public utility company. Now, then y'all don't want to lose, but they do. I want our council to look at the last page of that. And there is a whole bunch of codes. But. Does any of them, anybody like that, does any of them say agriculture? Is agriculture listed in anyone? I mean, they go down through local assessed property owned by a bus company. State assessed operating property owned by a railroad company. By telephone and telegraph and cable company. But it does not say anything about agriculture. Let's remember. The state of Indiana says. That it can't be agriculture. It's gotta be something else. It has to be. Well, they could probably, we might probably get maybe get to. Eight hundred or eight oh five, locally owned assessed vacant land commercial. Or local assessed vacant land industrial. Well, now that does work. That does work because. Let's go back. Let's go back to our districts. So we said that, well, now we say a C S E S can be in a business district. We don't have a commercial district. And it could be in our industrial district. But you know what? If you read that list of twenty-eight. None of that is industrial for that zone. Not a single one. We can't, we can't even put it there. Can? The zoning says that we can. There's a way for them to do it. Don't think that they can. Say can. Now back down. I'm gonna finish this up because.
Okay, because I, I, I know you put a lot of work into it.
But yeah, we're gonna get, we're gonna get the meat and bone. We're gonna get the meat and bones. This is, this is the part line here. So I need some bone. Here's the fact.
We have a lot of people who do wanna speak to us tonight, so.
I need somebody to hold this one up. We're gonna get to that one there. You wanna hold it? I'm gonna hold this one up. We're gonna go back to that, that report. Has this land coded agriculture, coded agriculture? Here's the important thing to remember. Coded, how we are taxing it, how it's coded. Coded agriculture has a succession of. Has this land coded agriculture deteriorating in productivity? Have the owners of this land coded agriculture been prevented from its normal use? Have the owners of this land coded agriculture been prevented from making and carrying out normal farming operations? The answer to these questions are found in the USDA Farm Service. Agency was operated under the United States Department of Agriculture. Inside the twenty fourteen and twenty eighteen farm bills are the agriculture risk coverage and the price loss coverage programs. Full disclosure, I received some of that. On November sixteenth, the twenty twenty-three Biden signed into law the H R sixty-three sixty P, further continuing the operations and other extensions of the Act twenty twenty-four. Which extend to agriculture improvement acts that were commonly known as the twenty eighteen farm bill. This extension allows all the. L C to continue through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Provide financial protections to our farmers. If substantial drops in crop prices and revenues that are vital safety nets to all of our farmers.
That's what it is.
These are managed by the Farm Service Agency, the city of us to our government. Agriculture and census farm participants under these programs. Annual yield data. Provides for the A R C adjusted trims benchmark yield guidelines revenue report, which is where these come from.
So I just thought, well, I won't.
These are numbers that the USDA.
I'm glad you guys had a good.
Standing room, only.
And they show that the corn and soybean yields in Indiana and Fountain County, Indiana have steadily increased. Revenues for the same period by the same year for show that soybean revenues have increased twenty-one percent and corn.
It's all good. I'm glad you had a good turnout.
And according to the United States Department of Agriculture Farm Service Data Classification. And coded agriculture land in Fountain County has not failed to grow a crop in the past six years. And according to the United States Department of Agriculture Farm Service Data, land classified encoded in Fountain County. Has not become less productive, contrary, soybean acres produce five percent more and corn acres produce seven point four. You will hand out number seven.
You have been doing it a bit. Yeah. You know, and it was only by mistake. Each of that I had placed on. He was pissed off because he fired it because he didn't get his master.
They missed you guys' name back there again. Dolphin said, section eight, there are other pair, pieces of paired value regarding this land classified encoded as agriculture in Fountain County. Each year Purdue University publishes the economic reports which include cash rental rates. The USDA NAS versus Purdue survey, cash rental rates. These are important because every single, every single farmer praiser. Loan officer, farm manager, they use these to determine the value. And I'm not gonna go into all, read all this for bits because we want to try to get through and.
Thanks, sir.
To the most important points. Because there is. If we notice on there, there is not a single year that the cash rent values have declined. So I want to get to the recap, and this is where it all comes together. Might make a good picture for you. Production agriculture and utility grade solar installation facilities are both businesses. And they both. Use land in their business plans. And for each business, the state of Indiana assigns a unique real property tax assessment. Use classification code. Not how zone. How its real use is, and this is where our zoning has to be changed to match the state code so we can tax it differently. And the state of Indiana clearly separates. Ag is a one hundred class. And solar utility companies are an eight hundred class. Production agriculture in Fountain County were increasing in both. Yields and revenues. And those revenues are also coming from Fountain County grain elevators that are paying loans too. And the cash rent prices, they're going up. They're not going down, averaging about seven percent more. I don't hear anybody's cash written land going, hey, by the way. I got paid less this year than I did last year because nobody's willing to farm it. Think so. Now, we're gonna get back to that document that Dalton was trying to get you to sign. That thing that they said is. Everything is true. Everything is true. True is, true is a relative thing. True is. Well, I may think or may not, but if somebody's got data to show me otherwise. I've got a thing to differ. That would have to be what you guys would have to do. But the bigger question we got is. We're talking about changes of businesses. Class one hundred and a class eight hundred. And we've got to move them. From one hundred and put them in an eight hundred class. And in order to do that, according to our zoning for use, because we don't have industrial in that. They've got to apply more barriers. But that's engine use. Every single holder. Of Dalton contract. To get it to industrial so we can capitalize, because on the back of that, if y'all didn't read the other report that they posted out that Jeff posted. You know, like the current valuation, that comes out every year, that fourteen, that thirteen forty-eight thing. Every year, it comes out in December. The state says, this is what it's, that's what it's for. If you look back on it, it's on page three. And then this year, and that, and that is for January of the next year. Every year it has gone up. Every year. Thirteen thousand dollars an acre. Woo, I'm in the lottery. I like that. That's a lot of money. We could do a lot of good with that if we, if we don't. Get used in the process. So we've got to get it coded right and classified right. And in order to move that ag ground to industrial, it's gonna have to be rezoned. Can't just check a box. Gonna have to move it. And when they move it, that is neighbor notification. That is public hearing. And now the people that are hiding behind the nails of secrecy have to come out. Say, I've got one of these because I want, I gotta move it so that we can do that. At the end of the day. This can be done. This can be done. Because. If they collectively can move a group and the whole group moves them over from a one hundred class to an eight hundred class, from agriculture to industrial. Once that's done, that wipes out that section C provision of the Economic Revitalization Act that protected. Agriculture. It's got to be moved first. Before they do it. It's a tax code issue. And I'm really surprised which dolphin was here because I would tell them for the millions of dollars they pay their lawyers. I would have thought somebody would have caught on in April of twenty-one. When that went into effect. That you can't call it ag, you can't classify that. Because as we were doing the fancy footwork with our zoning, I remember that didn't come out until August. They could have thought that one snuck in, they could have stuck industrial under one of our designations, but they did it. No, they, no, they, they think what they got paid for that and they screwed that one up, one little section, it might have. But that's the importance of this. The important thing is, is I don't know how on the face of the earth you can say blanket, agribusiness, we want you no more, because we can win the lottery with solar.
That's right.
Yeah.
There's no way. I, I don't, I don't see how in, in good conscience you can pick one industry over another, especially when that industry is, is making money. It is, it is posting revenues and it is increasing in, you, the land values are going up exponentially, I don't see how you can say that the statement, that the succession of growth, that there's no more revenues, that the farmers aren't building whole buildings and they aren't, and they aren't buying pickup trucks and semis, and there's not excise tax coming in from that, I don't think that's dead and dying. No, probably not thirteen thousand dollars an acre. But in rural America, that's pretty darn good. And for Dalton and their lawyers and the people that have contracts, no, 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 you're gonna have to go through the process. You wrote that zoning code, you're gonna have to apply for the variances. You're gonna have to follow the steps that you put in place and every step of the way. If it takes two or three hundred of us to be there at the public hearings to back up the neighbor that doesn't want a solar field in their backyard, we're gonna be there. And you can't hide in secret anymore, if you got them, them contracts, you're gonna have to change it.
Yeah.
Ain't no more hiding. And if you live in Chicago in Illinois, you're gonna have to come down to that other gearing, sucks it to you. But as far as me, my family, our history in this county, I'm not fighting for this because I want farming, I'm fighting this for the farmers. For the way of life that our county was built on.
Yeah.
And it's my own fault, we's probably leaving it up.
And we got problems, yes, we have got a huge problem, this building is a huge problem, and that's just one of them. But we'll figure it out.
Yes.
We always do. But we are not going to throw our farmers under the bus. Because if we start with this one, it'll go to the next one, and the next one, and the next one, and before long, they will be extinct, and the way of life that we have known will be extinct.
Yeah.
And when we eliminate hundreds of farmers, and we only get back three lawnmowers and fence fixers from the solar companies, and we don't have enough students to afford to pay our teachers, and instead of having three school districts, we're consolidated to one. No, I say no. But I also say that when, when you get that legal document put before you, think it all the way through, look at all the details. I deal in healthcare, okay? I have people come in that are legitimately sick, and I have people that come in that it's bullshit. Okay, I can tell you're faking. But I can't say that, I work for a bunch of Catholic nuns, I can't say that. But what I can say is, when I come back with the scientific data, and I can go, guess what? Your trouble breathing is a fact that you smoked a case of cigarettes, carbon dioxide is three fourths of the way to a house fire. You did that to yourself. But in this county, I will not allow us to do that to ourselves.
Yeah.
And thank you for the time and the patience, it was a long time to get it.
Hi, Jeff McAdams.
Well, I'm Jeff Anderson. I feel a little bit like you watched the whole movie and then you wait in the credits and then there's a little blip at the end. That's about all I've got, it's just a little blip. So, but my husband says my nervous meter is broken, he said, I'm too worried about people seeing the stains in the carpet and not worried enough about talking in front of strangers. Sorry, sorry, babe, well, I'm a level one school mom and flower farmer, but in my previous life, I had a career in the environmental consultation industry, and I was told this week that because I'm not a lawyer, I'm a layman, and that that means that I have no business reading the law. And I think that there are plenty of good lawyers that would disagree with that, alright? Because aside from it just being the duty of citizens to be able to read and understand law, and the duty of us as adults to teach the next generation how to read and understand law, and understand that there is a difference between words like man and war in most laws. It's also true that there are plenty of professions where we have to read code and we have to read statute to do our job. And so the first commissioners meeting that I came to, I actually seemed to oppose the new draft ordinance and the implications that has for local business. And what I was met with instead was not an opportunity to talk about what I came to talk about, but instead a big emotional outpouring about solar. And I've gotta say, it really, there's a lot of vitriol, it's very contentious. And you know, there's a lot of talk even of like nefarious thieves and conspiracies, and there's a plate for all of that, and everybody gets to make up their own mind based on what they read and what they know. But I also think a lot of landowners were just presented with a choice that they felt like they needed to consider to be prudent. And instead of demonizing those landowners, or even the officials that made the way from, from what I understand to be good intent, and maybe it's naive, but I just choose not to be cynical, and if you tell me something, I'm gonna take you at your word until you give me a reason not to. And so from what I understand, the people involved really thought that this was what was best for the county. But because of my consultation background, I used to keep government entities, like I'd work for the Coast Guard, and big corporations, like I helped V D on their giant oil spill debacle. I helped them navigate their relationship with code, so like the endangered species back and things like that. And a lot of times, you know, the V D oil spill was a big screw up, but they wanted to do everything that they could to make it right. And so what we go to is the law and go by the letter of the law. And, and when I read the zoning, I really arrived at the conclusion that because Dalton had applied under the twenty-twenty-one ordinance, they were gonna be grandfathered in regardless of any ordinance change. And that, that still may be so, even if we do get the moratorium passed, because the moratorium would only be on new applicants. But when I heard about this thing, the economic revitalization area, it's not Economic Revitalization Act, that would reference a law. The economic revitalization area, I said, well, let's look it up. And so I know you guys have, you know, your fill of this definition, I'm sure. But it says, I'm just gonna abbreviate E R A, and E R A means an area, skipping the, the basic parts of that, that has become undesirable for or impossible of normal development and occupancy. And then we shift to a new clause, so we end at occupancy, and then we start with the because. But the general definition before because says simply that that area has become undesirable for or impossible of normal development and occupancy. Furthermore, I assume that this just applies to the parcels that Dalton was gonna be leasing? Did I find out it's all four townships? Didn't say either, the whole town?
I'll explain it to you back.
The whole town is in this E R A. And I think even a lot of the landowners that are involved in this program, they have no idea like all of the shenanigans a lot of the day works, that would have to take place to get it through. You know, it's fine if this, if this company comes in and by their own merit, they make a case to the landowner, and they win the lease, and they go through all of the things that we have on the books. But to come in and force our council to declare townships undesirable, that's a different story. And so furthermore, in section C, which is after an and, which doesn't even is optional. It says the area of land classified as ag land for property tax purposes will be predominantly used for ag purposes for a period specified by the designated body, I think that's y'all. But I've heard that, well, we're gonna harvest this. So we, we do have a harvest, we are keeping it ag. Well, the USDA disagrees, and Indiana State Code disagrees, solar is not ag. And so I, I like looking at codes, fortunately, I married a guy who's really good with numbers, and he ran some numbers, and I'm, I'm gonna try my best not to bosh this thing. Okay, so he, he, he did ask a lot of questions to Ms. Chambers, and she was very helpful. But she doesn't have all the answers, right? Those are the very good questions. Okay, so when the infrastructure goes in on the ground, that, that is the real property?
No, it's a business personal property.
The business personal property is the infrastructure, I apologize. And, and as far as what that's worth, the low end is about four hundred thousand dollars an acre in infrastructure that they're gonna put in. The high end is eight hundred thousand dollars an acre, so we'll just go with the little, the humble four hundred thousand dollars an acre. And then it's minus about ten percent of the installation cost, so for this, we're doing three hundred sixty thousand an acre. If you assess that at the value that's one point seven.
Yeah, at a tax rate of one point seven.
The tax rate of. One point seven, and you, you, you stand that out over the six thousand some odd acres in the Dalton project, you actually end up with a first year's tax revenue of thirty-six million dollars. And from what I've heard, the abatement was gonna facilitate economic development payments that were ten million. I may have that wrong, because that's all been hearsay, I haven't read that in here. But if it's thirty-six point seven million dollars would be revenue that actually stays mostly in the county. So we've been told that that business property tax, well, we've gotta do the abatement, because if we don't keep the economic development payment, all of that money goes to the state and to the Fed. But from what we understand, it's still in the and, right, we don't have a full answer. Most of that money would actually come to the county. And then as you depreciate that, of course, it's gonna go down in the revenue over that ten-year period. But if they choose to depreciate over the life of the abatement, the ten years, then when it returns to the county to tax it, you don't have anything to tax, they already depreciated it. So if you, if you sort of make an estimate based on what they would depreciate over ten years, you are forfeiting a quarter of a billion dollars in tax revenue for the county and replacing it instead of economic development payments of, I've heard anywhere from ten to thirty-six million. And then the only, the only other thing about that was that abatements are only legal for manufacturing. One more, right? Yeah, but the, the energy type wasn't, wasn't actually available, if it's a utility, then they could give you their payment. Now that is not my wheelhouse, so I hope I didn't, I didn't bosh that part. But as far as what is true, in the E R A, I've had a lot of conversations with people following me from the whole gambit. And I've heard that, well, the intent of that language was to, to supply areas that weren't gonna be able to have public utilities ran, so there's no sewer and, and no power. But it's not your job to read past the law and decide on intent. There is a way to do that in our society, but it's not at your feet. I actually think it's a lot easier to be in your position, because all you have to look at is what's in front of you and decide, does the theory of need those criteria hurt?
Do you plan to ever come back again? Okay, then we'll open it to anyone who wants to come up, please state your name, so we'll help fill the record.
What did they do anyway? blew out a Portland nursery. I too prepared some data, it's not as complete, but we were reading the same page. What I do is I am a quality engineer, a continuous improvement engineer, I've been doing that for over a decade. But what that means is, I'm the guy that gets a call that says, hey, Dave, there's a problem with our vendor in Mexico, you need to go down and look at their process, figure out why it's jacked up, convince them that it is jacked up, because they don't understand our product. And then convince them to fix it, by the way, none of them report to you. By the way, you have no leverage, other than what you create. So without getting into as much detail as sometimes is necessary, I read a lot of I S O codes, I read a lot of underwriter laboratory codes, C S A, which is the U L Canada, and that's the Bible verse that we quote in that business. You wanna get to that result as quickly as possible, I don't wanna spend six months in Mexico. Unless it's vacation, but they didn't wanna pay for that. So a little bit more concise, when I heard about this emergency meeting, I didn't have all, all of the info, and due to short notice, I could not find myself which four townships they were speaking with. So I did an estimate, found out this afternoon what the actual townships were, and I could revise my data. But the problem with that is, I don't have any handouts for it, so you'll have to look at the report, and I'll do my best to represent it well. This map here is very convenient, I'd like to point out, when they say four townships, it's basically a line right here, it's the top quarter of our county. It's huge, absolutely unmodelled. Let's talk numbers. Based on population numbers, square mileage, number of homes, fact-friendly available on Wikipedia, I've determined this. That would be out of our county, county population of sixteen thousand four hundred and seventy-nine, it would affect five thousand four hundred and forty-five homes, that is thirty-three percent. Thirty-three percent of your county who would suddenly find their land deemed unusable or undesirable, I think is the appropriate term. Without getting on all the legalese, we've had enough, I'm sure. I'm trying to keep it simple, I understand what I say in one whole looking report, but I wanna be simple about it and straightforward. That would be two thousand five hundred and ninety-four homes. Two thousand five hundred and ninety-four families who suddenly would not have the value they had. It is literally twenty-seven percent of all land in the county at ninety-seven square miles were sixty-two thousand and eighty acres. What is that worth? May I borrow your thing, because like I said, people's literally need reading the same. This one right here, okay, I'm gonna straighten. All right, these numbers are equated, not long has it ever been this high. High grade, average grade, low grade, cash rent, never been this high, ever. Okay, this is every year, the reason I think, my personal opinion, that they're trying to rush it through is because this report comes out in June, and last June, the value of all that land, even if you just assume it's agriculture with no buildings, no improvements, no infrastructure, no homes, no businesses, no business value. It still went up somewhere in the neighborhood of, well, at least, I did the numbers. I can give you a number. If we assume it's average grade, the valuation change in real dollars, and it's not average, it's good later, is fifty-two million dollars increase. They don't want to pay it. They want rights to it without having to buy it. If they were to buy that land, that, remember, that fifty-two million is just the increase from twenty-two to twenty-three. If they wanted to buy it in twenty-three at value for average grade land, that would be six hundred and ninety-five point nine million dollars in land. Again, not assuming any businesses, infrastructure, improvements, or anything else, just land. However, there's a caveat. If you increase that value, which you will do by taking it out of pharmacy, you have to transition it out. The transition out cost per acre is not the thirteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars per acre he listed and did his figures on, it was that table, whatever it is. The value for that is per acre, let's see, where was it? Uh, twenty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents today. So if they were to buy the land and transition it out of ag, again, assuming no improvements exist on it. That would be a purchase price of one point five six billion with a B dollars. They're giving you coppers. For access to the billions. That's why they wanna do it. And I don't claim to know any better than you do, what will happen when subsidies enter. But if you can't make a business work without government subsidies and not paying for the land, it's probably not gonna work.
Yeah.
Simple math, I'm not an accountant. But it's pretty simple math. If they were to get a loan from the bank, let's say they can't down the county trust and paid that over thirty years, the current situation of our economy. That loan would cost them at a seven point three interest rate, which is the standard now, three point eight seven billion. That would be relevant. I couldn't find any examples in our county of ERA qualified property. I didn't look exhaustively at the big county, and I'm just one guy, and I had four hours. So maybe I don't know. But I got some pictures, and I had to look in cities like Philadelphia, Detroit. And these are what they look like, and I don't have big fancy, because again, I had four hours. That's an apartment building where the front's falling off. And the concrete and sidewalk is literally rubble. Uh, this is a house that's dilapidated and, and the siding's falling off. Here's an industrial complex and the sidewalks have been abandoned and clearly grown older, we don't have that. If we do, I guarantee you, we don't have sixty-two thousand acres. I guarantee you, one quarter of our county is not, so phrase, undesirable. One final point. Dolphin's website very clearly states that their solar farm is four thousand five hundred acres. Why I'm God's green earth, they need fourteen times that if you needed it, is ERA. They're playing a song. I encourage you to put this down.
Hello, I'm not talking like these guys are talking at the home. I mean, Cindy, who to shoot, I live on Hardy Road, south of Covington. I found out about a month ago from a neighbor that a solar field's going up around our carpet. I turned and contacted by anybody, but a lot of solar companies tell me this isn't gonna happen. My concerns, what's gonna happen to my air, water, and soil quality? Is it gonna get contaminated, is it gonna cut out radiation? Is it gonna cause health issues for myself and my family and my grandkids? What's gonna happen to my grandkids when they become childbearing age? What's gonna happen to my great grandchildren? But mostly, what's gonna, why do we need these solar panels, why do we have to have all this? Why did this company reach out and tell us this is going on? I am here from a neighbor, this is wrong. Another thing is, what's gonna happen to my property value? Can anybody tell me that? Yeah?
Yeah.
The house is gonna grow, I won't be able to sell it. As of today, I cannot sell my property for what it's worth, because I'd have to tell people, there may be a solar panel coming all the way around you. I can't sell it. I can't afford to move, and I can't afford to live there, they put solar panels out. What am I, what are we gonna do? How do we protect ourselves? So I'm asking this council, please do not vote for solar panels. And I'm, I know I'm not the only one in the situation, my son just spent four hundred thousand dollars going to the house last year. If we would've known this, we probably wouldn't be living there today. My neighbors, I see you, uh, friends from the community, this is all gonna affect you, this is gonna affect our taxes. And if the people are telling you it's not, I think they need to wake up. Because who's gonna fund all this, our tax money is funded, and I'm completely against it. And if anybody ever wants to talk to me, I'm not hard to find. I'll talk to anybody who wants to listen. But I'm against solar panels for personal reasons, because I do not wanna live in the middle of solar area. And if this, if this project goes through, I will be surrounded on all four sides of my property by solar panels. And I'm told this puts up a hundred and fifty degree heat. I'm in the middle of it, what's my air quality gonna be? I won't be able to stay there, I don't know where to go. So if anybody else wants to talk, I'm done.
Hey, Clint?
My turn.
Hey, neighbor.
It's long you got a hard call, right? Wow, I'm impressed.
I do have to say something, when Dane said, we need to do this honestly, and in the old, and I'm driving a semi, but then I get a text. That one of our commissioners and two of our council members had a closed-door ERA Zoom meeting. Is this true, was there a meeting with, was it Baker Tilly, what's, what's this, who is this company that we do?
Baker Tilly.
Baker Tilly.
I, I had people call me and ask me about it, and I have to say, I know nothing about any meeting.
Does anybody here know? Okay, you do, you guys know, come on, we know, we know who it was. Okay, is this how we're gonna do business, is this the sneaky crap that goes on? I'm in, I, I'm not even gonna say who it was, but I think you two that know, need to say up and say who it was, and then. Well, I was told that Tim. Uh, Shoemaker was on the phone with somebody else. Now, just as a dumb guy myself, that means that there's a forum for the commissioners, is that right? He's on the phone with a commissioner, talking to Baker Tilly, two council members, and I was told, I don't know that. Dolphin Solar was on the phone too, I can't, I don't know that. I, I ain't talked, please sir. Okay, how do I know that we don't? Okay, so it was you. So we're having meetings behind closed doors, now listen, 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 just listen.
I was just told that Baker Tilly was on there to give us some information on blood, or the vapor. Take, take care of.
Okay.
Just, just sit there and I'll listen, I didn't make any.
Okay, but did you know what happened?
No.
Okay, nobody else knew what happened, but we had, how can we have two council members here? Do I?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to, I just.
I, I, I don't hear them.
I just went to represent the council.
Okay.
Let them know.
Did this, did Dudley know about the meeting?
I did not know about the meeting.
Okay, so this is where we're at here, but how can we possibly trust the people that we have voted to represent us? When I see this as we, our representatives that are supposed to represent us are representing a solar company, they're representing something else. Okay?
I was not.
I, I can't, I talked to you about this, I can't be in those meetings.
But in their.
That I wasn't there.
They didn't know, we didn't know about it, so the fact that they participated, I mean, I don't believe they were told, hey, we're only asking you to.
Why would you have a meeting?
I don't think it's.
That you didn't make public over this, especially now what's going on?
I can probably give a little insight if you're willing.
Yes.
So I believe Jeff and I got an invitation. You would not believe the number of meetings I have in regards to the county in a day, in a week, in a month, or a year. That aren't open work session meetings for the entire public. You know, go visit the highway department, I go visit the ambulance department, we do this all day long for weeks or months. So there is no hidden agenda, because, listen to me, Clint. There's no hidden agenda, because we're working during our work hours on behalf of the county, it wasn't a secret meeting. It was an invitation to participate, just to clarify some, some information, let me finish. And I think it was Jeff and I and a commissioner that I know, and you asked me on the phone, so you know. That I was the person that told you, because you've been asking me, so I don't know if you were begging me to ask you, or.
No.
Or just not clear tonight, because you're not, you're not getting upfront with the public when you believe it. When you're telling people it was hidden, and I told you on the phone the other night. What all took place, so you can't speak out of both sides of your mouth on this, you gotta listen.
Well, no, there is some time to go in, it's.
No, I'll finish, I'll finish.
As citizens.
Clint?
No, sir.
You asked about the forum, it was not a forum, there would need to be four of seven of us.
No, no, it's a forum for the commissioners, if the, if he was on the phone with the other commissioner. Is that not a forum? Okay, so then I, then I apologize, I didn't know that, how that was, I was told that made a forum.
Did I clear all the conversation?
Okay, yes. I did not. My, I'll go back, how can we, how can that happen, when you know what's going on, you know what's, and then we have meetings that are not held? That can't, this can't keep happening, that's how we got to where we're at, and that's all I've got to say.
I won't take much time, I just wanna make sure that, um, I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but I think I will. Because, oh, sorry, Derek May, my wife is Christine May, uh, we own Vineyard Farms, Vineyard, as we always say, formerly known as Monty's Farms. Because everybody knows the location when we say Monty's Farms. There have been a lot of people fighting for us, which I cannot tell you how much it means where they are not affected at all. And so they could easily sit back and not really care or not do anything. But they're fighting for us, and they're specifically fighting for Vineyard Farms. We are gonna be surrounded on all four sides, which I'm sure that everyone knows. When we first found out about this, uh, Angie Burke, someone that we did not know, shut up our house last October. And she said, did you know that solar farms are coming, and did you know that you're gonna be surrounded on all four sides? We said, we did not. My wife called me, we were immediately devastated, I left work in the middle of the meeting, as you can imagine. We automatically know what devastation that would have on a wedding venue, that people come and book because of the rule setting that it has. So last October, I, um, immediately was contacted by one of Dolphin Solar's cellmen, who I will name Tim Shoemaker. Who said, they will work with you, they're good neighbors, they'll build burns. Your property actually is probably going to look better than it does now. It's gonna have a great backdrop, they'll put in pollinators, they'll build fencing, they'll do this, they'll do that. I wanna set the record straight, six months later, they have offered to do nothing. I just got an email last week, they're offering no further setbacks than what's established in the plan. They said what they will do is add plantings one year early. Which will add one to two foot growth on top of a three to four foot tree in front of a ten to fifteen foot solar panel. If those landscape materials are available. They also offer for us to basically, in essence, turn over the keys to our property. And allow them to rent it to whomever they so choose during the construction phase. Which then creates an income revenue stream coming from Dolphin Solar to Vineyard Farms, of which my wife is running for commissioner, I'm sure you all know that. Huge conflict of interest, no way we would ever do that. So I wanna set the record straight tonight, Dolphin Solar is not a good neighbor, they do not help you, they will not do anything for you. We are one of the most impacted people in the county, I understand some of you are surrounded on all sides as well, I feel so bad for you. And that's why I'm getting up and talking, because I, if you're talking, then I should get up and talk. If, and besides the fact it's not just our residents, but it's our business, and it will devastate us, we do not want to be baked. In the middle of thousands of solar panels that are three hundred feet away, nor do we want to sit around for thirty years and look out of every direction of our home, first and second story.
Yeah.
That's false. So I'm asking you, I know the powers are divided among different members of the government, but I am asking you to please. Whatever influence you have, whatever decision-making powers that you have, all of the information that these citizens have worked so hard together. To follow, and the variances and the ordinances, I am asking you to please to do what you can to stop this insanity, thank you.
Want to make a couple of comments, uh, specifically with regard to investigating the council members about meetings that you knew and have not had. Uh, I've spent most of my career either on the development side. Or represented, uh, municipality decisions, I'm from, uh, county of Boone, county attorney, all the boards, all the planning commissions. For a number of years throughout my earlier career. And for our group specifically, since this is the first time that I've had an opportunity to invest. A, an elected body on behalf of our group. Uh, I want them to know that as part of your duties and responsibilities as council members. You have to be in a position to meet, to gather facts, to get information, that doesn't mean that there's anything nefarious going on by anyone. You just have an obligation to get as much information. As you can in order to make the best judgments if you can, that includes all kinds of meetings, unless you're making decisions every meeting. Backdoor decisions, there's nothing inappropriate about meeting, that's part of your duties and responsibilities, especially with regard to your constituents. If you have constituents, you ought to be in a position to be able to go ahead and talk with those, I'm not. I don't know what went on, it's the first time I've heard this, but I, I would suggest at least our group. That it is appropriate. To be able to have meetings and gather information as a member of the county council, in fact, you have to do that, you can't simply. Try to gather information at once a month meetings, it's, it doesn't allow you sufficient time to gather the information you need to make decisions, obviously. You know, the input is, is important, even community input that takes a long time. And it's, it's all, uh, all very extremely important. But I just wanna make that comment, uh, so that when somebody says that, that's not coming from our group. I understand the process, I understand what you have to do, I understand those are normal activities that you have to go through. As part of your duties and responsibilities, and I just want our group. Uh, to remember that, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to present information, basically all the best facts that we have to make our case. That's what we'll do, not on any other basis, we'll be in a difficult situation.
Can I ask one question, maybe one question? Oh, excuse me. Can I ask you a question, like? It's just for clarification, because I'm, I'm the weakest link in the group here. So. Who? Who legally are you representing as friends of, like, we have that checklist, hold on.
Yeah.
There were several, excuse me, like, there were several people that were speaking, so were they all part of friends, I'm just trying to clarify.
I don't, I don't think so, we've got, uh, I would say.
Are you a non-for-profit group?
No, no, not yet, we, we have talked about that. In terms of going ahead and putting it in the non-for-profit.
So when you say, when you say friends of, like, who is that legally?
Those are res, those are residents of Fountain County that have signed a petition in opposition to the solar right, and those types of things. Obviously, when you've got eight hundred, eight hundred people, we've got a small, a small working. And, and in terms of other people may sign on or may not, the problem with any kind of work like this is. You're speaking based upon the group that hired you to make your best case. You can't necessarily prevent anybody else in the member of the general public who wouldn't agree with what I'm saying.
Clarify, again, I'm trying to understand. Can someone be pro-solar and be a part of Friends of Fountain County?
For me?
Can someone be in favor of. Your friends of Fountain County and be in favor of solar? Or is it just opposition?
No, this is opposition.
Totally.
I mean, I, I could try to suggest that maybe somebody might, uh, ought to join the group, I'm not exactly sure why. We are in opposition to solar, opposition to the, the whole concept of trying to give a, a tax.
And I was just asking, because if we talk to lots of citizens, I don't know if I'm talking to you, or if I'm talking to. Other Dane, or if I'm talking to somebody, so I'm just trying to.
We have a small group, and it looks like we're gonna, you know, do a not-for-profit in, in incorporation of that group. Uh, in order to facilitate, uh, and, and be prepared to provide information and data. And, and we'll be able to clarify that, obviously, it is fairly organic. And it's, it's quickly come to this protective point, so I'm doing the best I can to be.
Appreciate that, and then Dane mentioned exempt, you mentioned exempt, and Dane mentioned exempt, and I think what exempt means, when you were going through your documents, you said you didn't know. I believe that schools, churches, government entities, parks.
These are individual.
Nature preserves. Ditches land trust, all of those would be exempt properties under that code.
Our group is just an organic group of Fountain County residents, all of them signed on the petition and all. Some may have signed that petition, I would not be aware of the circumstances. The other thing is, I will speak for our group and our group's best interest. If I think somebody has misspelled with regard to our position, I'm gonna say so. That's just the way this works.
So do you think anything that Mr. Walzberger or Mrs. Anderson says?
No.
Do you agree a hundred percent?
Absolutely, we were totally, we were in agreement with regard to the issues connected with. The opposition, what's been done and some of the facts and information, other than it probably could have. I think I was sitting here trying to make a comment, I think. Close, close, I may have written more piece, but there was one presentation. But notwithstanding that, it was a very good presentation. And it was heavy on facts, which is always important to be able to have. I didn't believe I had that much time to be able to address that, so. A lot of what I put in, I put in writing to you and tried to do that and get it to you in writing so you have an opportunity to review it before you hear it. I think that's our goal.
And I was just clarifying, I'm not questioning.
That's a fair question. It's a fair question, a good question. And normally, sometimes in the process, I get asked that question.
I go first? I, I'd just like to say, I trust everyone on this board, I get along with everyone, we communicate. My policy is that I'm not gonna have any meetings unless it's an open meeting. Because I think the perception right now, the public is that there's too many things going on behind closed doors. And I want everything open. And there was a couple of meetings at Papal Corner once. I was invited to the first one. I invited all seven council members when I come about that, about that meeting. I had Colleen posted on her door, that it was a public meeting. Fifty-four of us there. There was a lady that's here tonight, a member of the public who came to that meeting, and she was confronted by a commissioner for being at that meeting. It was a public meeting and she shouldn't have been confronted. And that's why I will not participate unless all seven of us are participating. But I trust all my members, I know they're not gonna do anything behind the board without being open to meetings.
Yeah, regardless of that subject, I have asked multiple times at other meetings, not this group. For transparency and clarity. And it's not been forthcoming by certain parties. And I appreciate what you're saying you do to do what you can to agenda that. Is there a mechanism that we should have in place? Or a method should be in place that we can maybe share with those parties? Or with the public, so that we can just nip some of this in the bud? Because we just, just wanna know why we know this, we just wanna know why we think this. And are doing these things, because it seems like there are certain members who have an absolute belief that they're gonna pursue. And they're not gonna be forthcoming about why. And the math doesn't add up. So what can we do for that?
I can't answer for other office holders, I'm gonna argue what the council has always had the policy that anyone that wants to come to our meeting and speak is allowed. Anyone that wants to ask us questions, we allow those questions. If we don't know the answer, we try to find out the answer, but it's best if we can have the answer for you that evening or that morning when we end our meetings.
Then I sense that, and so thank you for that, you guys are all, all the very open, willing to ask questions back. And the other meeting has been flat dismissed. And literally dismissed with, well, you probably know their facts. So if they're not willing to be forthcoming, what can we do to get that transparency?
Okay, anyone else?
I just want everybody to know, I think most of you have probably heard me say this multiple times, but. My family does farm and we are signed on with G N X, but we have been told by G N X that they are not utilizing our property. And we've been told this for over nine months. And we have yet to receive a termination letter, which disappoints me greatly because that means that I cannot vote on anything with G N X. But I want everybody to know, sorry.
Because we farm all around the property. And Derek said the night that they wanted to put trees in. A year earlier, is that right Derek? We have not been notified that. So we haven't, we did not know that until tonight. And I'm sorry that I cannot vote, but I want you to know my feelings. And I do not agree with the E R A at all. Thank you.
No, I heard before we had someone else speak, but I've heard that it includes all of Davis Township, Richland, Logan, Shawnee. I've seen two different maps, I've seen a map that included all, all those townships. A friend of mine who farms in Richland Township, he brought a map to me that didn't have part of Davis, didn't have all of Richland. So we really don't even know what map because no one has come to our meeting to answer our questions. Haven't really provided all the information we need. I'm looking at the zoning ordinance. And I have found there's two copies, there are two different dates, but the last one, we have fourteen pages on wind. And three and a half pages on solar. And I'm reading through some of the minutes of some of the meetings and wind farms have been in here. And soon as they saw that, they said, no, we're not. And I'm a Kelly, I'm, I cannot support the E R A. We need changes to our zoning ordinance. We need open meetings so that people can get. So many people have sent me a lot of articles on the solar. And it was all, this is all thrown on all of us, really strictly. And we need to investigate all this and make sure our ordinance covers everything. Like, you know, the state, I was reading through Senate Bill four eleven. And even though it is a, not a recommendation, I forgot how it's worded, that, you know, the state isn't mandating it. Because they don't wanna throw one thing, they want counties to be able to decide what they're doing. But, you know, states recommend a neighbor notification, be a good neighbor when you're going to do solar. And for farm or for wind farms, they recommend that you notify all the neighbors within five miles of your property. So there's so many good things in that Senate bill. And I think our county needs more time to, to look at, look at all the options and make sure everything is covered before we continue on. You know, we're talking about seven different solar companies I've heard that are looking in this area. And so now they're looking in Wallbach Township. What happens next month, are we gonna have Milk Creek Township or Jackson Township? It's just, and we're gonna have a whole different crowd, so at this point. I'm not afraid to admit, I am not gonna support the E R A resolution. I think there needs to be a lot of changes. But I, you know, I went on my rant, but if anyone else wants to speak, more than welcome.
Good evening, my name is John Struck, I'm here as a resident of Fountain County. In my occupation, which I'm not representing them in my occupation, I get the opportunity to crisscross the United States. This Fountain County is not the only county facing solar industrial complexes. I've yet to meet one person that is for the solar industrial complexes. That is not the person that they get money off of the solar industrial complex or that they're in groups with the people in order to be able to make those decisions. One of the things I keep hearing across the United States and even here in Fountain County, as I talk to people in County Market or wherever I may be. Is, gosh, I didn't know about this, it just was popped on me, I learned about this last Wednesday, I learned about this a month ago, I learned about this today. Somebody told me today, I was at County Market and I mentioned to them, hey, come out to the county council meeting about the solar industrial complexes. They said, the what? I've not even heard about this, they, I paid attention to the hundreds of signs going around, no solar, and they don't know what it is. So I rise today telling you that there's another issue that's gonna be smacking you in the face here in just a little while, is the carbon sequestration issue and the carbon pipeline issue. It's gonna be an issue that is gonna be in front of you, and these are issues that are, you're gonna have to make decisions. And there is equally dangerous, if not more dangerous, having sequestration in Fountain County. They've already released maps, I can get those provided to you, I don't have a handout to give to you. But they've already drawn maps cutting through southern Fountain County to go from Linden all the way to Terre Haute in order to bury carbon dioxide out of the air. Not gonna bore you with all the details, but I'll give you a couple of the highlights, one of the, I say highlights, and that may be a misnomer. I guess we'll give you a high-level overview. One is that they're gonna do direct air capture, they're gonna literally suck CO2 out of the air in order to put it into the ground. I know we're talking about agriculture right now, what makes our plants grow is CO2, we have to have it in order to do photosynthesis. You kinda have to have these trees out here, they suck in CO2, photosynthesis happens and it shoots out oxygen as part of the process. And these people are gonna go and put the direct air capture in order to suck it out of the air and pump it in the ground, which creates carbonic acid. We've got a lot of decisions that we're gonna have to make as accounting, that you're gonna have to make. I appreciate you for taking the time out of your night to be able to have meetings in order to. I would echo what was said that you have to as county, as county council members, make sure I have the correct office there. As county council members, you should be finding out information, not just in the monthly meeting that you have here, thank you for doing that. And I tell you, we got information we can provide to you, so I look forward to speaking to you in the future, thank you.
Anyone else? Carol?
May I stand here?
Sure.
We've heard a lot of arguments pro and con, on the contrary, against it. One thing, one aspect that has not been mentioned at all, at least I've heard, is the effects this will have on nature and preservation. Conservation of this town is really important. And as you know, I own property in about three different townships and I'm really proud of the, we try to keep the natural countryside, the woods, et cetera. And putting this solar panels, it was totally destroying the movement of the natural movement of the animals. We know, and there have been some tests about the turkey, turkeys and birds flying into the pasture because they, they think that it's water. So it's gonna really have a major impact on the nature. And I would hope that you're all thinking about that, nothing to be upset about that, I'm surprised, I mean, it's important. You know, the deer moved in here, probably about, we didn't have deer when we moved here, they're running deer in Fountain County. Deer started moving in and now the population is just back to the same, intense as. But then the B and R introduced turkey and partly now the deer population, that brings a lot of thunder and that brings, you know, the impact as well. And I think it's important that we try to consider that as well.
I find one thing interesting, all the emails I've received and all the phone calls have all been against solar. And I haven't had a single, I don't know about anybody else, but I haven't had one single person. Come to me and ask about being in favor of solar panels. And I'd just like to know, is there anyone here tonight that wanted to speak for this?
Not for. I'll speak quick just because you asked, so I'm not, I'm not gonna interrupt her, go in front of her, but. I do have customers, I've talked with some people that are for it. You know, and I understand their side, I understand the other side, I personally do believe you should be able to do what you want with your land. But you have to be a good neighbor. And I think that it's gotten so far and there's, there's so many questions of, what about this, what about this, that we don't know. And I, you know, I certainly don't think you can be a good neighbor who definitely are hurting maybe business next to. I think the Ranger Power one was much smaller and maybe didn't affect as many businesses or other people. But there's still a lot of questions and I've said, I mean, you guys have all heard me since, since that one, you know, went in and you guys don't know how I voted on that one. That there's, there's too many unknowns. And so if we are gonna do this, it has to be done slowly. I think the zoning board had good intentions when they started with the information they had. But I think as it went along, many of them wanted to change some things and they weren't supported to do that change. I don't agree with that, I think we need to support, you know, seeing what we did wrong, seeing how the first one goes in if it does. What changes do we need to make, you know? If it is okay, then we proceed, but I don't agree with putting all our eggs in the basket and sort of not, in the township. So I, I'll speak on behalf of those people that are for it and they have their reasons, you know, but also they have to be a good neighbor.
My question is. I have no property that you would wanna put a solar panel on unless it'd be lethal like that. And I don't want there either. But if I did have land, how much would I be able to get from it? Would they be paying me to put the panels on my property? Would they continue to pay me rent? How would that go?
Well, from what we've heard, it's about a thousand dollars to twelve hundred dollars an acre. You do have a contract with them for forty years.
Oh, sure.
Twenty years plus four, five renewals at four years.
At eighty-eight, I don't think I'd make it.
But the contract would continue to your heirs.
It goes with the land.
It goes with the land.
On that subject, what happens to the solar panels once they're no longer usable? I don't think you started on.
Well, that's what we would like to know too, because there was supposed to be a decommissioning bond with the county. And we've not heard anymore about that for quite some time, and we are very curious about that ourselves. And I guarantee that that will be a question that will come up at some point, and I hope to God that they have an answer.
That's a good question, I mean, I've asked the commissioners and our council has requested a copy of the contract between Dolphin and the county. And I've yet to see that, I think that's something that should be shared with all council members, I got it in mind. Boo ass, I did our question, I got it, you got it? We sure should get this in here.
Okay, then you need to know that a decommissioning plan is recommended in the state standard that you were pointing to, but there is no decommissioning requirement.
And we could end up with the same situation that we did with the landfill. Commissioners, when they signed that in eighteen ninety-eight, had to, and I wanna correct Mr. Smeller or whatever his name is. I know it's a fake, fake name, but, you know, he said, I said that we were not following the law and keeping a million dollars for the landfill. Well, there is no law, the agreement that the commissioners signed when they closed the landfill was that. The county had to have a million dollars in reserves to pay for anything that happened over the next thirty years. And our goal is to keep, we will, our goal is to. And our goal is to keep, we will, our goal is to have a million dollars in our rainy day fund. We cannot collect any taxes on the rainy day. What we do is every year, whatever's not spent on our county general budget. We can put ten percent into the rainy day fund. But they did change that a couple of years ago. They're, they're giving it three or five years. We can put fifteen. Yeah, this is the last year. We put fifteen percent of that. But the state, we get audited every year. We have nine million dollars in our county general fund. So we are covered with a million. They, they are signed with that. We are not breaking the law. And I never said anything about we're not getting, we're lucky we haven't been caught. Because we have the money and we're audited every year. But the commissioner, my point is when the commissioner signed that contract in nineteen ninety-eight. They probably had no idea that this year we're gonna have to pay a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars out to take care of leakage in there, to make, make sure the roads so that the idents can go back there and inspect it. And so I'm looking back and if, even if we spent fifty thousand every year, we're gonna have too many dollars in the pain. And my point on that is, what's the solar panels gonna cost the taxpayers in thirty years? We don't know what the social costs are gonna be. And that's, we gotta make sure the county is protected. So the next generation that's taking our places here are not paying for the solar panels to be decommissioned. What I've seen in the prison is kind of requiring.
But, yeah, but I, in front of Roger Azar last week, the Dolphin permit is still not approved. He's waiting. Does anyone know, especially like the legal counsel, I mean, is there anything that can be done? As long as their permit is, because I know once it's submitted to Roger and he says it looks good, like it's done, done, done. So does anyone know if there's something that can be done to stop that while we're still waiting for them to submit it?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, permits do not go through us. Contracts do not go through us. That's entirely commissioners. That's what they, that's part of their position is they, they sign all contracts. But we are the fiscal board and we approve the, the extra note on paying for the contracts. In fact, that's, well, something that's coming up tonight is, is a contract that's signed. And that we have not approved funding on. That's the next step down on the agenda. After we hear from everyone and then we'll take a vote on the ERA resolution as we present it. So for anyone else that wants to speak.
Clarification, who of you are away?
All federal members.
This side. So. Again, you guys aren't involved in, in some of the stuff that's going on, but we're at a point where we're two hundred and fifty years old. What would our grandfather say, our great grandfather? The ones that fought the revolution, the ones that fought the civil war, where would they stand on any of this? We are so taxed at this point. Revolution doesn't make any sense. We went to battle over taxes and some other stuff, but taxes is one of the things that probably kicked it off. And we're here again. Two weeks ago with the commissioners meeting, I, I asked them a question. I addressed it differently. It's not about the solar. Because solar is just one of the many things that's coming. CO2, first question, I didn't pronounce it, is coming. There's, there's more. It is devised, it's designed to keep us divided. Instead of standing up and fighting for what is ours, our, our forefathers fought for what is ours. My question to you, why, why did you run? Are you still running on the same principles you decided to run for? Because if you're not, and you're not for the people, it's time to resign, leave office. Because if not. I know where we're headed. I know where we're headed. I don't wanna see that for my grandkids.
Yeah.
Because that's gonna be a devastation for years. So my, my deal is. You're servants of the people. People are speaking. Can I go listen?
Anyone else?
My name is Jeffrey Green.
I'm sorry.
My name is Jeffrey Green.
Okay.
I live on, I know if I'm sounding like a bro. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but I'm really proud of the neighbors who stood up scared to death to say what they say. So I'm willing to say what I am concerned about, not in favor of solar. We do have a farm. My farm is not in danger. My point is this, we have three fire departments in this county that serve us. Ag is the only one who has, to my knowledge, has a paid staff. And the rest of the people who serve our county, serve. They give away their time, they're away from their families, and they're making a sacrifice. I'm not a firefighter. My husband is not a firefighter. I have a relative who's a firefighter. But I live in this county and I'm protected by neighbors who give up their time and service to protect us all. And this thing coming to our county is a major problem for the fire departments. And they are not prepared, equipped to deal with it. I had a conversation with the Attica chief. I could not get a hold of Covington or Petersburg. And he assured me that he could handle it. And I described to him, fires that I've read about on the internet. And he said, if I can get to the fire within fifteen minutes, I can get it under control. And I said, you mean to tell me you're gonna call fire, volunteer firefighters, do the staging. You're all gonna get in a fire truck and ride all the way out. I'll pass Attica. And you're gonna get there before that thing takes off into somebody's house, somebody's barn. His answer was, I don't know, but I'm reliant upon the other volunteers from Covington and Petersburg who aren't even paid. This, this is just horrible for the people who serve us. I asked him, are you prepared to deal with the crisis in your region? Because all of the farms are up there. He said, I got a hundred thousand dollars from whoever, I don't know who he got it from. And I asked him, he said, that will help us to buy another truck. We need another truck. How much does a truck cost?
Six hundred thousand.
He told me way more than that. So this is my heart. I love living here. I love being in this farming community. My husband and I travel with our business. We travel all over the country. We don't go to the west, but we are everywhere else. I love calling Covington home. I love our community. I'm thankful for the people who serve in our community. Thank you for all of you who give your time to serve. And I care about the people in the fire department who are going to be at risk.
Anyone else?
You talk about contracts that the commissioners sign. Do they sign those without contacting the folks to see how we're gonna pay for it?
They did on this last one.
You say they did?
But that, that's coming up. Let's take care of, it's, it's coming up here. Next on the agenda, envoy contract, but we need to, no one else has any comments. We have a preliminary declaration resolution for the creation of an economic development area.
One other thing I would like to make about the ERA and putting in this situation, you know. My understanding is the benefits of putting it in the ERA, you know, is that they won't pay as much in personal property taxes. And in return, we'll get an economic development payment. And I'm not yet sold that we're not just taking one from another in different areas and that kind of thing. But I know some people feel that's where we can get more money to the county. But my problem with that is that, that economic development payment is not going to be paid by, in this case, Dolphin Solar. Because you don't get paid until the project is completed and they're selling electricity into the grid. And they have made it very clear, and I think that's the case with the majority of these, that they are a development company. And once the project is done, they will sell it to a company. So that economic development payment that we should get is coming from a company we don't even know. But we don't know if they have the means. I mean, it will be in a contract for them to buy and it's part of it. But we're making a decision based on something we really don't know about in the future.
There to be too. And I know Denton County had a problem with the windmills and they filed bankruptcy. And it's almost cost the taxpayers. So I think the legislature ended up studying them and saving them for that. So. I just have a couple of things to say, and it's really to the group that's here. Is my whole forty-year professional career has been in the nonprofit sector. And nothing good takes place in communities without an organized group of people making things happen. Whether it's for a food pantry, whether it's for a women's shelter, whether it's for a baseball league, whether it's recruiting volunteer umpires. It goes on and on and on. And so I just commend you for being organized, even though it's quite recently. Nothing good is gonna happen. I think you've struck a nerve, or this issue has struck a nerve, that it can be a positive thing for our county. You know, just encourage everyone to take the high road in all your conversations, all your social media posts, all your emails, your phone calls, the text messages. Meet people at church, pray inside them, who are against you, all those kinds of things. I just wanna encourage you to march on and keep on doing those kinds of things. Because I think it's gonna improve the quality of life for all of our citizens in Fountain County. And it comes on the heels of one of the quotes that I've been, I don't know, sharing for the last couple of months. From my best, my favorite basketball coach was John Wooden. He said, when opportunity comes, it's too late to prepare. And so that's kind of what happens in these kind of situations. You're not prepared. We don't always know what's gonna be coming. We didn't know COVID was coming, right? So how do you need prepared? But I think by having organized, engaged groups of citizens, always in the process of doing something. I think we're gonna be better off for it. And then my stance on the ERA is due. Due unto others, as you would have someone due unto you. So.
That's exactly why I am making this call. So better. I listened to the ideology. Then I'm gonna give you more. Four hours of work, it was right now. I've had a lot of phone calls. How do you stay? I am not. Because I haven't got all the information. They know me. We don't have any info. And I don't go with you that much, but anyway. I just like to say that I have talked to a person who was involved and his land is involved with our solar. It's down for somebody, you know, that would like to take his land and make money. But at the same time, he feels like, and they have his family. It's a tough, it's a tough approach to decide. Now I'll tell you something off there. I looked at the map. You may lie. I wrote a note on the verse solar in it. Then I wrote again. Because of your vagueness, I think there's more information that has to be found. Not for this group, for everybody that lives in this camp. So why help me make up my mind a little bit? There's gonna be winners. There's gonna be losers. I just hope everybody's, but it's all sitting there. We're not kicking dirt in somebody's face. We're still good citizens. What helped me make up my mind was I could not fathom the idea of the northern part of our county being covered with solar. Don't know how to talk. And we've talked about things that this Dolphin unit needs to understand, but they gotta change. This house built for a land has a lot of things that Dolphin units, centered by solution, don't have. The very last statement of that resolution, gotta turn it around a little bit. Gotta turn your stock. Is it right? You know, you sold your land, Fountain County came out there like. To who matter? But it's all sitting there. The next day, that land is in jeopardy for forty years. They're gonna be paid wholesale. We don't know if they're all gonna be torn down after, after push cry time. We don't know. We'd like to know that, but I can't pick that out of the air. So. I, I just think we need to step back. Take a look, look at all. Let's have everything. So I just think, Mr. Chairman, we, I don't know how long this is gonna take. But government wise, they're not working together as a government. I'm gonna put the nail on the head. I walked in and talked to our accessory. I said, did you know? Excuse me. Did you have any, any knowledge of the solar units coming in at the exact point of the jam? You know how I, she said, no. Did it make you know? Where is, I don't think she knew. She said, no. Oh, I didn't need to, I just asked. So I was like, that's right. This is a government. That's enough. That's, that's, that's enough. That's a code. It's the commission and the council. It's worth it, yeah. So back up. Back off. We're gonna do, today's I agree with. And it's back down with the, you know, practice together. All you guys had all your stuff. Let's give you a A.
You're talking well.
So, anyway. Thank you guys for what you do. And I appreciate you coming. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
On resolution number twenty twenty-four dash nine to create an economic revitalization area in uh northern part of the county, their motion on for or against the resolution.
Well, let's put it on the floor. Should we now vote? That gave, um, you want to make a motion, put it on the floor, okay? So we can vote like a second.
Pause that, I mean, the heck. So your, your motion is to pass resolution number because I had no previous, you, your motion was
I'm consistently, consistently pushed back on this release. The council knows in at least two years, and a lot of you here in the room knows that I pushed back on this part. So I don't know what I, what I, what I want is I want the council to be on record opposing this.
So I think before, I think
Make a motion again.
Okay, that's what I did before. So your, your motion is to uh against passing resolution number twenty twenty-four dash nine.
That would be my.
And Jeff, are you still attacking that? Okay. Is there any discussion?
One other thing, what'd you say, Jim? About the timeline? You didn't say anything about timeline.
No, no, I've been pushing back on this in the council notes and they, all of you here know what they're pushing back on. But uh my position is consistent. There's been a lack of transparency. A lack of all the other things we talked about. And I, I have not been trying to read all of my, all, everything I've said over the last two years. I don't realize some places on tape. You want to go find out, you can go listen to it somewhere.
So, and, and I will ask that we continue to show our votes by raise our hands, because that was one thing I heard the other, last week at the plant commission meeting that it was I for and I against and and there were votes against it and people had to ask. So Dick Clay be talking that when I first came on as council, we vote by actual hands because people need to know how to vote. So uh there is a motion and a second.
Would you read the motion again?
A motion is to not approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash nine, which is the creation of an economic revitalization area for Dolphin Solar. So all those that are in favor of Jim's motion that we don't adopt it, raise your hand. Record shows six oh one extension because that way Okay, now before you, I think everyone has, I have to make people share a lot of time. Oh, no, you're, no, here, this, by this, stop my thought. I, I wanted to know all different things, but we were all sent a resolution asking us to uh approve a one-year moratorium on accepting any did you get it? From the attorney, um, one-year moratorium on accepting any ERA resolutions from solar companies and not vote for tax abatements for one year until this is all straight away.
Just for wire my, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
And I've got it here somewhere. I just don't find it. Uh Taylor, do you have it?
I have one.
Yeah, but I, I looked, I looked over, I talked to Dudley and to three hundred and old. Didn't have any issues with it for.
We want to read that one, if I can find it. Yes. Yes, oh, yeah, because I saw everyone on the, I was talking, exactly, we, we have been given a, a resolution to consider to well, Taylor can read it and
What's the number?
It's gonna be extended.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash ten, Fountain County Council resolution establishing and approving moratorium on economic revitalization areas, ERAs, tax abatement, other subsidies on commercial or large-scale solar alternative energy generation and storage projects, systems or facilities. Whereas the laws of the state of Indiana empower the Fountain County Council to exercise any and all fiscal powers of Fountain County, including specific responsibility to include the following approving annual operating budgets of all county departments, establishing salaries and compensation, authorizing expenditure of public funds for specific purposes, fixing tax rates and levies, authorizing borrowed money in the form of bonds and notes. And establishment and consideration of economic revitalization areas, together with the consideration of tax abatement and other subsidies for applicants within the unincorporated areas of Fountain County, Indiana. And whereas a majority of unincorporated Fountain County is zone ag, agriculture. And the Fountain County Plant Commission has made it known, they intend to vote on the moratorium for applications in solar energy generation and storage projects in an effort to guide future growth and development and potentially strike a balance with the maintenance of productive farmland. And whereas substantial activities for citizens support such a moratorium, importantly offer opposition to the development of commercial or large-scale solar alternative energy projects, systems or facilities, including specifically the issue of tax abatements for other county subsidies for said projects. And whereas this council is by, this council by law has been charged with the responsibility of securing the fiscal funds for their taxpayers and making wise and informed decisions regarding when and if tax abatement and other subsidies might be issued for commercial, large-scale solar alternative energy generation applicants. And whereas this council is charged with the responsibility and continues to make cost benefit analysis for the establishment of economic revitalization areas and granting of tax abatement and other subsidies within said districts. And whereas this council believes further studies, community input and data gathered in Indiana, as well as around the country need to be generated in order for the council to have a clear picture and substantial facts in making decisions regarding economic revitalization areas and issuance of tax abatement of subsidies to commercial or large-scale solar alternative energy projects, systems or facilities. And whereas the Fountain County Council believes that a moratorium in pause on the consideration of economic revitalization areas in the agricultural areas for the use of commercial, large-scale solar alternative energy projects, systems or facilities and the granting of tax abatement and other subsidies for a period of one year is in the best interest of the citizens of Fountain County is necessary to ensure that public fiscal health, safety and general welfare of citizens will provide sufficient time for the analysis and careful consideration of various complex issues concerning such developments and therefore provide sufficient time for due consideration to be incorporated into necessary revisions into Fountain County comprehensive plan and or zoning ordinances. Now therefore be resolved, the Fountain County Council hereby states as follows. A moratorium in pause for one year on all economic revitalization areas, together with consideration of applications for tax abatement and other subsidies, including the filing, processing, review or granting of all applications related to the fiscal decisions required to be made by the council as to large-scale solar alternative energy generation or systems or storage systems or facilities is hereby noted.
Question about this?
Maybe one year is enough time.
Well, can only be extended.
We don't know how long the power to bring the results going to recommend yet.
No, no.
It'll take sixteen months, just to get lots, if not more of it. And you know, it could be over there eighteen months.
And if, and if this is adopted, you can always extend it another year if all the steps are not taken to get the solar ordinance written away, if it needs to be written, so.
You know, then, you know, then would you roll with some of the things that we expect that that's accounting? That we these sort of things. You know, you mentioned, do they have a fancy that four eleven, Senate bill four eleven, doesn't need to mention a fast. Fountain County gives about seven of those ten things, right? If you look about, one of them wasn't a fast, at least you could have a bench, you could have a blue source. Right?
Well, now, I will speak because I'm building my own, I'm back, okay? It might, might be a good site. But each silver string I've got only has seven panels in it. And those seven panels each generate six hundred and fifty-six watts together. So it makes thirty-six hundred watts coming into my embers. My embers can only handle eight thousand watts. So when I pair two of them together, I'm at seven thousand watts. The lady that was sharing about the, the virus, this is, this is no made up stuff. That's understand, okay? So if, if there is a surge, if you're on at the back of the panels, it's probably not telling you everything, not giving you the specs on all the panels, actual specs. The hotnesses could surge. If mine is built in, so there is no way possible for each panel to surge more than ten percent and blow my embers. And that's only six panels together. You string hundreds of them together, you have got megawatts together. They all surge on a hot sunny day like today, and you have got a lightning bolt on the ground. That's reality.
And that's why all that needs to be brought to the plant commission and that all needs to be in an ordinance. And the public needs to come to those meetings and make sure that everything's covered before a solar ordinance gets adopted. And I think this, in my opinion, will make the commissioners realize that we are serious, that we want changes made. If we had on a, a moratorium. So, uh, for one year, so. And I will entertain you. Yes, we saw you this today, yes.
This moratorium does include Dolphin Solar, right? I mean, they can't but I mean, Dolphin Solar cannot, just because they sent an application. Because I know the moratorium for them doesn't count for the ordinance changes because they're grandfathering. There's no grandfathering with this moratorium on tax abatement. I mean, they still are disqualified for tax abatement.
They will not, if this is passed.
Or they look at deals.
Like perfectly, I mean, it's not gonna stop them if they want to go ahead and put the solar panels out.
It's hard to, they're not gonna fit. No, so they can't really apply for an abatement, it doesn't stall.
So is there a motion to approve this resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten?
I'll make the motion. Get with it. Can I do that?
I, I think. Hang on, didn't you tell me that she, she couldn't vote on the ERA, but she could vote on, on this resolution, right?
Certainly.
Okay.
So make the motion.
Okay, Kelly makes the motion, Sarah second, Denise makes the second. Any discussion? Yeah, if I show a hands, all those in favor of this resolution. That's absolutely. Well, they did. I'm sure they changed that contract now, but up until last year, Warren County paid one-third of all the expenses for staff, office. For money every month to to help with our renovation of Maple Horn, we're not gonna buy. So we were, we were okay with eighty-nine hundred thousand, but our agreement was not one dime of taxpayer money was going to go for it. Yes, we had our American Rescue Plan money that the federal government gave. Yes, we had our American Rescue Plan money that the federal government gave for cause of COVID and. So he said that's what we want to use for a while now. We've waited, well, been almost three years now, and we're still waiting for a plan. Uh, and we've seen anywhere from four point one to eight million dollars for, for just maybe a corner building. And maybe that's not acceptable, and I said at the beginning, I was not wanting to agree to taxpayer dollars to go into that building. And now it seems that they are continuing with the process. And I've signed this contract, and so I put that on the agenda for tonight, because, uh, in my opinion, we need to vote to not sign that contract. And make the commissioners sit down with us and come up with a plan. Not only with us, with the public.
Yes.
So I gotta, I have a question for you. When I was politically, I was on campus. We had the art, and you digged it out, but there were. One point two and three million dollars were there for the end. That, 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 that might read, that is absolute, we gave money to Kingman to help with their water system, yeah, we gave money to Hillsborough. To run their appliance out, to keep a business from losing. And we, we gave money to Pataca or the Weaver program to help. We're an economic, and as long as everyone, there was people from all of this county on that board. Right, we left one point, I think it was one point one or one point two million that we saved back for, um, Maple Horn. But I, and since, uh, that, I have been told that Hillsborough did not spend all their money, and there could be up to three hundred thousand dollars. That we could also put into that though. Okay, so we're at about one point four million, now, it has to be budgeted. By December thirty-first, they're going back to the, the federal government. So, you know, I don't think we're gonna be ready for that, but I believe we can take that money. And put it in an account to say that for reimbursement of our, ambulance service or something, and then we can use that. Am I correct?
I don't know, I would like it to.
The rules changed all the time.
They do.
Uh, when first said couldn't do this, couldn't do that, and then they, people were complaining that they weren't able to lend that money in. So they just changed the rules all the time, but I think we can put the money into the banks. That go out the report to the state or to the federal government that we spent the money. And then we can use, I mean, as long as we set aside the things I would have abandoned for. Okay, but I may, maybe some of the other council can help us, but. They, the commissioners, to, that one, that three million dollar, their net was theirs to spend on the. All, that's the way, um, I would. All the American Rescue Plan money has to be approved by both the council and the commission. But that's dependent, but was, was it approved by, so. We, for that, for that.
The plan, the ARCA plan that was, is made up, uh, one, one million was to go towards the annex. And that left. For the renovation, that was the money put aside. We need to appropriate four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six sixty-one by the end of this year. And it has to be spent by December thirty-one of twenty twenty-six. If we do not spend that money, we have to pay it back.
I do.
So.
So that would be roughly one point four.
Yes, yes.
And then whatever Hillsborough brings back, so then it'll be up to.
No, that's. Somebody had their hand back.
I was gonna say, we're doing our wastewater drain plant, I could use more.
We first got that much, I said, you're a different kingdom money, we're different, but you said, if I. I'm not wrong, I think you said, we're all right, we know the county needs the money.
Engineer estimated ours to be one point two million and two point four.
Now, I know, everything's gone up and, and, but your tax rates, I mean, Kevin still at seventy-two cents. Compared to ninety-six and ninety-eight for Pataca. And your city taxes are a lot lower than others, so, it doesn't sound right, but.
I think too, on the annex. When we went and looked at it, we decided that we could use it for nine one one, we could use it for the corner. We thought about the veterans officer in there because it's handicap accessible, it would be a much easier fit for them. We did not know at that time that we're gonna have to have a sprinkler system for it. So. And the elevator, because there's an upstairs, so, um. Yeah, so that's all ADI compliancy, so I, I, you know, our hands are kind of bound on that, but.
They are, but we also have the option to put it up for sale, and they really don't have too much money, but. But we can build a building, and Brad's promised me he could build, if it's two point one million, he says, I'll, I'll get a belt for you for under two, but. Remember that, Brad? He built a city building, and, and he was just telling me about these. County, there's a city garage down here, it's gonna be, what, twelve thousand square feet? Hundred and forty thousand dollars. Four hundred thousand for, for the concrete and the walls, no, no, he didn't, but. You know, that's a far cry from seven million dollars, and eight bays, you told me? Um, sixteen garage doors, sixteen garage doors, seven wall, wall groups, so.
But it's, um, I, the ten bays.
Ten bays, okay, Jason at the highway garage told me today that he, he wants five bays for, for the highway garage.
Six feet long and sixty feet wide.
Yeah. But your cement's six inch thick, and probably for the county highway, we'll need eight inch, but still. We need to look around and some of these. Maybe I shouldn't say this, but a high price Indianapolis firm, I think there's local people that can do it, Brad.
When I built the ambulance building in Jesusburg, I saved county money because they had three beds from, yeah, from Jerrit. You know, they always go to Indianapolis or Jerrit, they don't think anybody local can do it. And now, build our city building for four hundred and fifty thousand.
And you use brick? And you use brick, yeah. Brick, all certainly it's walled, and, uh, and if you keep them local, mighty state local, the governor, the local county, the governor's block, the office, a lot of people. And they spend it in the community authority, well, they spend it in the community authority, and, uh, yeah. We gotta, we gotta rethink, gotta think how, how we do it, and then we can make a, make a bigger impact with smaller pop. If we, if we don't think about, I mean, it sounds almost insane, if we did this thing about local first, then how can we do it local first? Well, if you open it up for the public and have public meetings and talk about, these are things we need to do, you can, you can get ideas. Like see, Kathleen, she was, you know, an idea. Well, they want to spend fourteen million dollars on this courthouse. I mean. And I get shot down every time I think, I say this, but the roof needs to be fixed. Let's fix the roof, and, but I get, it goes back at me that. Well, then it won't be guaranteed if we do other renovations, but it may be fifteen years down the road before we're gonna have the money to do other renovations. Main thing is we need the roof deck, we need that chimney brought down, and, you know. I want the historical society, the art council, uh, involved if there's gonna be a major project in here because. Daryl Freed back there and Nancy Wagner, they already, along with the county helping, half a million dollars to redo all these murals. And we sure don't want something done that's.
We met the great, great, great granddaughter of the original artist, did you know? We met her, and it probably in, uh, uh, private, and they're pretending to sell the estate. And I spoke with her about the mural, because there was damage, and she said, there is money in the family estate to take care of me and Venus. And I was a prisoner, I got her information, I can forward it to you.
And Winnie Clark?
No. Dana, I have good familiar, uh, but I can forward you the.
I, I know Winnie Clark's mother was involved in the thing, and she donated.
How many there's a point, like, four, five generations, yeah.
That'd be great, because you spent all that money, and I know there's some damage that's there from that. Let's fix the roof. I find, I get shot down, but, um.
Then I ask your clerk, Kurt, just coming to you, this is the project, which is talking about building. The issue with this building, in summary, are the roof and space, right?
Yes.
Oh, well, well.
What helps me there?
In the trencher's office, it's about a four inch track on the floor.
So we're separating.
It's in that bathroom over there, the plumbing, you have to be careful when you put. It's the original, some of it's the original or planted. Or not original, but you know.
Original, yeah.
But years ago.
But there again, we need to have meetings about this, I mean, Warren County did a major overhaul on their courthouse. They didn't shut their courthouse down for a year, to be honest with you, so we need to talk to other people and find out exactly what. Some ideas before we just throw a million dollars at a contractor, starts doing some work.
Well, I think that we were supposed to have a joint, the thirteen. No one told me anything about going to being at, that they stayed, and, you know, the, and. Maybe it's more.
I, I'm not sure, I know the APCs meet Monday the fourteenth. There's, there was, I'm not even sure how I even heard about it, from you or, or.
Got an email. And the email went to, to Pauline, Brenda, and Tim. And it was a DOT committee meeting, they would like to meet, they would like to meet on the thirteenth. Where Jenny Kucner and council meeting, this email was sent to me on April twenty-fifth. Let me, let me go back and see.
And I don't share them on there.
Um, and then I got a mail from you, then that's a situation, Taylor, Dale, Denise, Billy, Kevin, Ellie, and Tom. Cece, Kent, and then Andrew Law, Lee, Hart, and Tim, She maker on thirty of the, of April, so that's this meeting, but that was at the bottom. No, yeah, it's supposed to be on the thirteenth, they said they'd like to meet on the eleventh, but there was never a time and nobody responded. I guess it was sent to me from Brenda. Nobody else got it.
So was Artur Turner gonna be getting a meeting? That he did not say something to you about, that he.
Yeah, I have on my agenda for the thirteenth envoy.
That's what.
And I don't know if Artur is coming with him or not, but Justin McCall.
What he needs were.
My concern, I didn't submit, I'm signing this contract. Yeah, well, they signed it on March eighteen, and then discussed it with us, and how, how much of that million dollars has been spent? Through now that we haven't approved.
Well, I was, I, I was, I hope, I hope there's one of those meetings there. I know, I did there, and I, and, and we just started our meeting, and we, we, uh, it's got me a stop to it, and we got to sit down and decide.
I mean, we, I had thought we had all agreed that county highway garage, it found me our top priority. It's a health hazard, we have employees that are, are getting sick, we have that, uh, testing of the air over there, and it's not moving.
The secretary is not even in there, she's in a yard barn, that's the building.
So. And I, I just wanna clarify real quick, like, you're saying that. You know, how much did they spend that you haven't specifically authorized, right? Because I think there was a motion in December, but I think that motion had a caveat that was. That the council approves the funds before, there was, it was a cap, right? It was up to one point six, I think. That envoy can spend, but you, the council reserved the right, or wanted to, what the language in the minutes was, that's all, the council would like to be charged only for things approved and voted on. Just, I'm not disputing what you're saying.
Yeah. Did, did they issue an RFQ or an RFP on that? The request is all obligation. I wouldn't know, I didn't even sign it without the contract. The contract, that high, I'm sure that you have to, the ratio, a lot less than that.
You know what? There's been a lot of ideas changed since we purchased that entity. Number one, it took a year of consultation just to begin to think about what we need. After we found out what building, it's going to suit our needs. Interesting discussion.
You know, I, I can totally go by, I mean, we were. Let me.
Shouldn't they have pursued asking more questions about remodeling and everything before they even approved? Million dollar contract, is that the final amount, or is that just?
Oh, that's just, that come out from design. Okay, so here's the. Here's what was presented to the council. Building four hundred and four hundred and twenty-five thousand, initial repairs, fifty thousand. Nine one one slash Warner renovation, two hundred thousand. EMI renovations, twenty-five thousand, meeting room renovation, fifty thousand, IT one hundred thousand. Total investment was eight hundred thousand to ninety-five thousand. And at our February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, two commissioners came to us and said. Maple Horn building is in great shape, and it will be a very easy remodel for the backwards, if there are any minutes. And now we're quite anywhere from the office and five to nine.
I heard the building had four key furs, I'm in confusion, I'm quite right.
If it's gonna cost that kind of money, we don't put all that in. My opinion is, that's a first study, but, I'm one, one, one voice I would say. My opinion is, does that first say off, but I'm one, one, one voice out of seven. So. Thanks. You wanna take only action on the.
Like, and we legally not paid for this contract after they signed it, they have. Their signature.
So the signature alone is not. Enough to bind generally, and I've read through it, I feel that same way. The the only question then becomes, you know, any vote that you previously taken, right? So that vote just separate. But I think you could, I think you take position that. Again, your caveat in the vote was, in the minutes at least, it says council would like to be charged for only things approved and voted on by the council. Uh, also said stipulation that we know where the money for the projects is coming from once financial report is received from Jason Semler, which I think we got. But yes, I think that last caveat of would like to be charged for only things approved and voted on by the council, you could. You could take this, I don't know if they submitted anything to be charged for yet, but I think you take a position, you you get to decide on to every one of those, of course.
I have all the events, more.
I'm sure that. I don't, I don't know.
And is this our bill, is this the actual charge or is this just an assumption that they're gonna have a million dollars to use for any bills? That are incurred? Okay, so I make the motion that only pay for the bills that we actually have. And that we table the rest until our June meeting, so we can have a conversation with the commissioners about the spending and the signing of contracts. That's my personal opinion. You can't write a contract and let you know where your money's coming from.
That's, that's why I think they assume. That that money they're putting in to spend.
Yeah.
Yeah, all good, all the.
But it had to be approved by all of us.
Well, I think they thought of the whole thing with the profile, oh, I just got my.
And what you're thinking is that they are thinking.
They never told me.
Because we made that in December, that decision, and that gave them the right to spend the money, but. I think based off of what we decided in December, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that they had to have joint approval. Or approval from the county and the council to spend that money, yes, it was allotted. For them to use, but they didn't give them a a blank checkbook to describe what they wanted.
I remember what.
Okay, so I'm not wrong, is that what I'm saying?
I remember the motion, that was the intent, that they worked with us on how to extend it.
Right. So. I repeat every.
I made the motion that we pay the bills that have been incurred so far. To Envoy. And we table the. The million dollars, the remaining, until our new meeting, so we can have a conversation. Probably our July meeting, it might be our July meeting, and so we have a conversation with the council super commissioners, so we can all be on the same page, basically.
It's that only consultation bills.
Right, yes. Yeah, I think that's all it's been.
I think they.
No, I don't think they've done any work, I think it's just.
You call it. That incurred so far. Up to date or.
As of when May one? As of May one?
Maybe.
I think that's gonna force their hand to tell Envoy, you have to stop first.
Yeah, so we're not paying any bills from today on.
Right. All bills are earned up to May one.
Hey, and I don't think there's probably been much. On.
Right, with the downs, down, down, if you don't call out consultation in your motion, do they get to say that about this?
Also, do you wanna specify that it's only bills that have been voted on by council? Not any bill that they spent, that all the bills were.
Well, we did all the, all the bills come in, we're calling, which then gets presented.
If there was stipulation in the motion, it's that if you're, so they're all agreed to spend. And so, maybe if it was, then it's that even they sent a bill for, but not that they've been voted on, then it should be recovered by most people.
It's approved.
If it, if it wasn't approved, we're not approved anyway.
Yeah, we have to.
No, it hasn't approved any else. And all American Rescue Plan money is supposed to be approved by both commissioners and the council before bill.
The way I understand this, the motion was if you would pay all bills that were just what's on.
Most, all of the bills, the way we understand it, all the bills are consultation bills, not. Proper, you know, like items, yeah, physical work or items.
It's just, it's just like, you know, drawings, uh, architect.
Yeah. There hasn't been any physical work that we know of.
Right.
That's why. Well, if you don't know, they have physical work, sorry, I mean. That's why I'm concerned, you phrase it the way this has. And they say, well, yeah, we got, oh, yeah, but we'll also spend the money that's not compensation. But you haven't called out just consultation, I understand you're trying to be good on our word, and not just stiff, right?
Frankly.
But. If they made expenses that are not compensation, if you just don't know about it, and you don't call out, that you're only paying compensation. You're now also on the.
I guess we could, we could make it as, as best. Presented, but they all have.
Yeah, so it should be presented so the bills and we can go look at them. And then.
After approval from us. Yeah.
That. So maybe. All bills. Up through today needs to come to us to approve. And then no bill we're gonna be paying either.
Right.
We have to today and they say.
Yeah, I think they have to come before us.
Yeah.
That means some business, sales your car, hey, I forgot. Like that, I forgot. Still daddy. So we gotta say no, that's it.
I have a plan.
I think that's.
We all could have made it since that I'm waiting for.
Yeah, we got anything that's been that they need to be, not the false.
Yeah.
False.
Obviously.
We're going to let the commissioners know to tell them that they need to call. Maybe for the work itself, they're.
So. They get, see, my answer is right, there's the motion is that. Andy Bell, we've been signing of March eighteen through. Today. Needs to be presented to us. For approval. Andy Bell from today on, so not all, first all. Envoy should stop all the work.
And.
I think it all needs to be first.
You first, yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean June four, first adds to.
Add, first add, if any, if any other bills coming in after today. Paying. And then reverse is it now.
Well, that'd be, we're given on another month to. To spend money, I I I think what he's saying is another month to get the bill. Well, get the bill. Stop.
That stop work, effective immediately, any else.
Yeah, we have a bill for June first to turn in the bills. But no. They didn't. Starting to get a little bit red. I can see those dollars being like. Yeah, okay, so. Work stoppage expected today with Envoy and. Uh, they have to do first to turn any bills in that they've done up through today for us to. That.
That's my motion.
Okay. And it's.
I can verify. We could see, and the contract we pay are stopped, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so there's a second to that, okay. So Kelly made the motion, um, they decided, they just statute. Okay, all those are fair.
Thank you.
Long day, long evening, I appreciate you having a look at me. I'll go home and take those pills. Thank you for that. Totally felt the gamble, and both heart attacks, I've admitted, yeah. I appreciate coming and expressing your view that walking you to now. You know, we can't make. It's much better for us to make decisions when the public comes and tells us what to do. There's many ways you could be telling a bigger room about this. Well, that was the plan to it, it's for now. It's all bringing the contents for, uh, but now. Okay, not thirty five or seven million dollars, but. Now, the money got, well, we didn't help leaving the quarter. That there would be easy anyway, you don't know.
We have to move all the recording equipment. Cameras, cameras.
Well, I can tell you. So Taylor, you told the last month. We have one third as many chairs there and not even half were full. And we've had some meetings where we haven't even had one in for a sub like that.
Yeah, always for Harold.
Nobody looks after your dollars more than Carol.
Yeah.
We need air. Okay.
I said, hey. Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, sorry.
Wait, wait.
Uh, I forgot. Um, Katrina got a grant to. Redo all the cameras in here. But it does not cover the two outside cameras. And it's approximately six thousand dollars.
Once you say five dollars plus. We need another eight hundred and nine dollars because we had to put a camera in. The reporters' office, whether with a blind spot, spot that could cause potential problems.
Okay. Yeah, instead of paying to advertise and doing the additional. You know, we did put money in our council budget, so we did. Have some. Some flexibility to know what bill to present itself. May I have a problem to. We don't have to do any additional change for, we've got the money in the funds, but if everyone okay, we take it out.
Seven thousand sixty five dollars.
For the two outside cameras, that's the one that.
Big Jim. Good enough. I need a motion to do it.
Uh, I. I don't think we have, because we have a money budgeted, so I'm just, I don't like spending council money and let's.
Me neither.
Okay. Now we have the terms, the needs, made the motion, they're. Second, all those are fair. Again, thank you very much, and we'll see you in one of the days.